Order in the court. I call the regular meeting of the Board of Education, February 6, 2019, to order. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a notice, after the presentation on the emotional wellness part of the agenda, we will have a short break, and then the government students can swarm and get their all of their papers signed. The mission statement: We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Mr. Esrati?
Second.
Motion.
Second.
And Suzanne, seconded, all those in favor?
I opposed.
Lorraine Loaning. These are questions or comments from interested citizens. I loved your little bit in the video.
Oh, you're welcome. Lorraine Loaning, District resident. Tonight, I want to speak about educational equivalency and as it relates to the budget, which we seem to be on the brink of now. Over the summer and fall, I requested, I foiled a bunch of documents from New York State ED, our district, and some surrounding districts related to transportation, textbook-related services costs that the district is bearing to send their students to non-public schools. And I'm still waiting on some stuff, but I have a from Monroe. As of 2017-2018 school year, we're spending $871,000 on transportation, $3,000 on some other stuff, and $11,000 on textbooks. This is a lot of money. As a percentage of the budget, it's not really a lot of money, but in absolute dollars, it's a lot. It's a bunch of entry-level teachers, it's activity buses, it's clubs, sports, stuff like that, or maybe even a rebate to taxpayers. I'm wondering, back in November, there was a new process for determining substantial equivalency, and it seems that the burden for this is on the local school board. And I'm wondering, what steps are being taken to make sure that schools that were, well, we, I'm a taxpayer, are sending our students to are substantially equivalent? I've sat at this podium, so it is not about taxes. Advocating for higher taxes for a better product, more programs. So this is not about taxes, this is about the product. As a mom, I have raised my kids to be involved citizens, contributors to the world, and I think one of the backbones of that is a good, a great education system. So I just want to make sure that we are sending as many of the Monroe-Woodbury District students into the world with a great education. So that's kind of what I have. I was just wondering where we are in the process, and if that's going to impact the budget for this year, or if you're just going to kind of sit on it and wait till see how things kind of roll. All right, thank you.
Can I respond?
Yes, you may respond.
Can I just speak to that? Because it certainly has been at the forefront of a lot of people's thoughts about what is Monroe-Woodbury going to be doing to ensure that schools that are in our district, whether they're any parochial school, it could be a yeshiva, it could be a Catholic school.
Montessori.
That they are actually, they have, they're teaching an equivalent curriculum. So I was on a webinar with the commissioner, and the commissioner stated that she was going to, because this is a new process, that she was going to make sure that all the superintendents were going to be given this staff development on how we go about that. So two weeks ago, I met with our district superintendent, Mr. Bilhak, and I asked him, so when am I going to be trained? And his response was, we're not sure yet. So that's a little daunting, because I'm sure that on Channel 12, there was a news story where a parent contacted me anonymously and was stating that there was not an equivalency going on at the school. So I contacted the school and was able to ask them to let them know that I had received a complaint. The parent is anonymous, it's really hard for me to do something when someone is anonymous. But I still have not been trained, so I'm waiting for the commissioner, as she has stated that she was going to give us appropriate training. Because there's a lot of document, I'm sorry.
You're talking about a school within the school district?
Correct.
That is, that is not a public school?
Correct.
That the complaint was about?
Correct. And that, the part about that that's a little daunting is that, I'm going to speak freely, it's disingenuous to say that the state is the person, or the, the, the state is the one that deems a school a school. So my question to the state, and I've said this publicly, is, so when you decided to make the school a school, what documentation did you have that they were, they were, they were teaching an equivalency?
Yeah, I'm waiting for those documents.
Yes, and so there's no response. So they are deeming, making schools and giving them what we call a beds code, and yet there is no part on their part before they make them, deem them a school, and then it becomes my responsibility. Whatever school opens up in this, in this area that's Monroe-Woodbury, the Monroe-Woodbury District. So I'm waiting. So as soon as I get that training, I will certainly share it with the community, but it is something that I am, I am waiting as well.
Okay, cool, thank you.
And let me add, by the way, this is all part of, of a long history of the state passing the buck. And having it not only financially, I mean, in 1966, the state aid accounted for 55% of our budget, and now it counts for 29%. I mean, so local property owners have been asked to pick up the financial buck, literally the buck.
Right, and I think the other question you had was financially, what's the impact? When I asked that question to the commissioner myself, the response was, you don't need any extra funds to do this.
Okay.
So I'm not really sure what she, having the superintendent or the assistant superintendent for curriculum to do this work would take him from doing the work that he's supposed to be doing for the district. So I argue that it is financially impacting us.
Lots of questions, huh?
And unfunded mandates, every year, we get more and more of those, which is, you know, which are not, I mean, unfunded mandates, the state is saying you have to do something.
Right.
I mean, this may, doing this, passing the buck down to the, to this district to do all of this work that the state, in my estimation, should be doing, is going to cost us time. It's not going to cost us money, it's going to cost us hello?
Time is money.
Right, time is money.
That's correct. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for letting me get on that soapbox for a minute.
Good, it's all right, we were on the soapbox.
We're on the same soapbox.
We're on the same soapbox.
Boy, oh boy, it can be really annoying. Ethan Jewinsky? That close?
It is.
Good.
Right, so today, I kind of decided last minute to come to this meeting. I had a rough experience with our after-school activities. I've actually mentioned it to some of you guys who have been to the Crusader chats in the past. So today in particular, I had four after-school activities at the same exact time on the same day, as well as two extra help sessions. There is zero chance that someone can be in six places at once. It's physically not possible. So as a person, you have to make sacrifices, but I'm wondering if the district could itself make any sacrifices. I think that funding for after-school buses would open up chances for these activities and extra helps to be spread out throughout the week. I think that if we had a Friday bus at 4 o'clock or 5 o'clock, or we have Monday bus at 4 o'clock, clubs could actually be spread out throughout the week, and students would have a chance to participate in all of the activities they're interested, and not have to choose between them. I think that, it is my understanding, actually, that teachers are required one day of after-school help per week, not sure exactly the circumstances about that, but that's my understanding, and as well that faculty meetings happen on Mondays during the week. So those are two days per week that teachers are not able to be advisors for clubs. So that already limits it, as well as not having buses on Fridays also limits clubs. I know that the sports teams all meet on Fridays, I'm a member of the track and field team, we have practice on Fridays when there's no bus, you have to figure it out. So when clubs can't meet on Fridays, or teachers are unwilling to advise clubs on Fridays, that kind of confuses me. I'm not really sure why that is, why they're unable or unwilling to do that. Check my notes real quick.
Okay.
I think that these activities could be better planned. I know that a lot of activities that appeal to the same group of students are set to be on the same day of the week, which is extremely frustrating. I know that National Honor Society, Foreign Language Honor Societies, the math team and the chess team all meet on Wednesdays, and there's after-school tutoring that these same students participate in on Wednesdays. So today's a Wednesday, that's why I'm here. And putting all these activities that appeal to the same group of students on the same day of the week is extremely frustrating, because when you're a student, you're still a teenager, you have to choose between all of the different things that you enjoy doing or would like to spend your time doing. And I don't think that's really fair to the students when there are solutions that can be found by the district for these problems.
Thank you.
Can I just ask him a question?
Yes.
So you, you said that there were, you were concerned about faculty meetings? You, is that what you said?
Yes.
That you're concerned about faculty meetings being on Monday?
Well, I think it just takes a day from the week that could be used to help the students, which I think should be the main focus of a school. And of course, curriculum and the teachers doing their job in the classroom should come first, so I understand that. I just would like it known that that is a limiting factor on the days you can have after-school activities.
Okay. And you said there's, in your opinion, there's a shortage of advisors?
Um, I think there's a shortage of advisors, definitely.
Okay.
But I think more than that, it's the spread of when the clubs happen.
Okay.
There can be an infinite number of advisors, but if they're only available on the same day, kids can't be in six places at once, it's not practical.
That's true. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. That's, that's great. We also have a student rep, and you can, any students who have concerns can go through him, or come to the, or come to whoever, come to the board, as you did. That's great. And Ethan said, you're supposed to put down the specific matter that you want to address the board about, and Ethan put down common sense.
That's good.
I, I, that's a bit snarky, but it's true, so thank you.
Maybe you could ask the state for some help.
Oh, yeah, I would rely on them.
Yeah, we'll ask, we'll ask the state to help us. Then you'll really be in hot water. Do we have an update on questions or comments?
Nope, the only update that I'm going to have is for Ethan at the next meeting, and I think Dr. Hasler will be handling that, and we'll have a response for you. Okay?
So that means you have to show up next time, too.
It's Wednesday.
And miss another thing.
It's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
He just wants us on cable.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 23, 2019, regular Board of Education meeting?
Motion.
Anthony has motioned.
Second.
Dawn has seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, discussion of, on school safety, led by Elsie Rodriguez, Superintendent of Schools.
So we decided to put this on the agenda, because I think school safety is on the minds of everybody in this community, it's on the minds of everyone nationwide. And I feel that it's a conversation that we should have in public, it's very good to have our Woodbury Police here, present with us, and I want to begin by saying that when we talk about school safety, it is not just about safety officers. Yes, they have a great presence, and it's great to have them here, but when we look at school safety, we look at it from a multi-prong approach. You know, we talk about PPS, later on, you're going to hear a presentation from our PPS Department, and you're going to hear that part of what we need to do is to make sure that there's, our students are in good mental health. And we know that many of our students are struggling, and so that's a piece that's really important. We have to find, you're going to hear them talk about the resources, the reach out that we're doing, looking for resources for our students and our families, because the truth of the matter is, is that when our families are struggling, so are our students, or vice versa. When a student is struggling, the family is as well. And we, in Orange County, which is not unlike the rest of the country, we have a shortage of resources for our young people today, and more and more of our students are experiencing anxiety, having difficulty coming to school, and, you know, MW Cares Day was really important because it was at the forefront of what we need to talk about, which is our students' mental health. So when we talk about school safety, there's four pieces to that. First is, of course, our students' well-being, social, emotional. And then the other piece is the equipment that you're going to see in our buildings. You're going to see things like cameras, vestibules, students have apps, the rapture system, we have 3M film on our side door, and we have alarms on our side doors, we're going to soon start looking at some of our buildings to have keyless entry. Those are the equipment pieces. So we have the social, emotional, the keyless piece, then there's training. We have lockdown drills, we have care meetings. Today, we're going to be signing a resolution with our local police to allow them to look at our cameras, to give them an insight into our buildings. Unfortunately, we have to be proactive, and we have to think that they need to be able to help us if there is an emergency, they have to be able to access our cameras. Now, that's not something that we've always done, we did it in the past, and then we were concerned about it, and we believe that it's important for the local police to have access to our cameras in our schools, so that they can be, they can see what's going on in our schools. That's really important. So there's going to be a resolution that the board is going to be passing today. And the last is our safety personnel. We have safety officers, we have an SRO that we agreed to have, and have a contract with the Woodbury Police, we're working with, on the Monroe side. We've been in discussions, and today, you're going to see in the presentation, discussions about potentially having an SRO at every building. But it is not, that is not the only piece. I just want everybody in the community to understand that when we talk about school safety, we're not just talking about one piece, we're talking about all the things that we put together to make sure that our children are safe. You know, our board president talks about our mission, and one of the first statements is, in a safe school environment. And if kids aren't feeling safe, they're not going to come to school, they're not going to learn, and so we have to be prepared to, when you talk about Lorraine, about our budget, we have to be prepared to put in our budget things that will make sure that our kids are safe. And it's unfortunate, right, that we have to do this today because of everything that's happened. But the students that are sitting here, you should know that you are really our top priority, and it's hard to, it's hard to do that, because we're trying to balance all of this, keeping you safe, while educating you, while making sure that we have enough buses and after-school programs, so that you want to come to school. But at the paramount of everything that we do is to make sure that you're safe. And the takeaway from what I wanted to share with you is that it's not, we don't have a one-size-fits-all, and we don't have one thing that's going to make our kids safe, it's multiple things. And it's really, I want to just thank the Woodbury Police, because last week, we had some issues at the middle school. Students sometimes think that they can write something on the bathroom wall, and we can just say, ah, they're not going to do that. No, we have a responsibility. And unfortunately, it was a prank, but we can't take anything as a prank, and so we had close to seven officers in the middle school, between Woodbury, and then Monroe, and then Chester. We had a lot of police presence, and I'm sure that that raised the anxiety of some of our students. So I ask you, the students, because this is really about you, that if you find people doing things like that, and they think, ah, it's going to be funny, it's really not funny. It's a shame, because we're taking police officers out of what they do, putting them in our buildings, and raising the anxiety of our community, because we are a community school. So I go back to, it's a multi-prong approach, we look at four different areas, and, you know, we are a work in progress. When I went to school, I was not trained to be a, this was not something that I was taught. You know, maybe the new educators will, but I was not taught in this, and I've, we've had to learn how to address this, and, you know, we have a director of school safety, that's very important, we have safety officers, we do collaboration, we work with everybody in the community to make sure that you're safe. So if you're sitting here today, I'm really pleading to you, the students, to help us make sure that our schools are safe, and let us know if there's a concern, but it's really important. So I feel like I'm on a soapbox, but this is really about people sharing with me what they think. So is there something else that we can be doing? I don't know, this is...
I think another important piece to that, you had mentioned the students maybe sharing about the conversations with the students that we've had, because, you know, one of the things that, that we've learned in having the student groups that come in to meet with us, is that the students are very dialed in, like, you know, if you want to know what's going on around the buildings, you talk to the kids, the kids know what's going on. And we've learned a lot, I think, about their feelings, about even things of positioning of safety officers around the building, and where the hotspots are, and those sorts of things. I think that that has been, you know, you talk about safety and security, that's been an important contribution to some of the decisions that we're making.
Yes.
Christian's been part of that group, and, and hearing some of the discussions about, you know, things that we need to be doing when the students are coming into the building in the morning, when the students are leaving in the afternoon, and those, those pieces. And I think that that's a brand-new feature, that's something that really hasn't happened a whole lot in the past, but it's been, I think, very informative to a lot of the decisions that we're making.
That's very true, and I think the other thing that people are talking about, many school districts in Orange County and throughout the state have been working with their sheriffs, and we didn't automatically go with our sheriffs, because one of the things that's really important to us is that we want our local police to have relationships with our kids. And it's important, right? We want them to be able to go to school and say, hey, I know this police officer, you know, that's what we're looking for. We're not looking for, for, for lack of a better word, hired hands, we're looking for people that live and work in our community, so that you know that these people are here for you, not just during the school day. I mean, if a police officer sees you, and he knows you from the high school or the middle school, he should be able to say to you, like, what are you doing? You know, that's what we're looking for, is to build relationships. And, and I know that some people in the community have been very upset with me, because I haven't jumped on the bandwagon, they're like, what are you waiting for? Well, I don't react, you know, I wait and I see, and I, and I always want to try to collectively make the best decisions for the school district. And I think that the collaboration with the Woodbury Police and our collaboration with the Monroe Police is important, because they are important people in our community. And the other piece is Monroe-Woodbury doesn't get aid. You know, people are saying, well, there's all this money out there. Well, unfortunately, we don't get it. So, but we know that it's important. So again, you're going to hear today from our PPS Department, from our, from Frank Scolante, our, looking at our budgets, all the things that we're going to be doing to make sure that you feel safe. And if there's something that you're concerned about, pick up the phone and call us. You know, this is, we're here to serve you, we really are here to serve you, and so everything that we do is really in your best interest.
Thank you. Next, a presentation called Supporting the Social, Emotional, and Physical Health of Our Students and Community, presented by Mrs. Christine Ricker, who's Director of Pupil Personnel Services, and the pupil personnel staff en masse.
And it's a strong staff.
I think we need to go to online voting and motion.
Oh, okay.
I think Donna Lee's very competitive, and us fumbling over each other.
Yeah.
Especially with quick form, we're all there.
Okay.
I'm trying to help her out. Well, if we do it online, we can actually record. So.
Yes.
Good evening. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great. Good evening, I'm Christine Ricker, I'm the Director of Pupil Personnel Services. I'm here tonight with our staff from our pupil personnel department, so we'll introduce ourselves.
Hi, I'm Julianne Brown, I'm one of the school psychologists in the high school.
Amanda Panetta, school psychologist at the high school.
Danielle Jordan, school psychologist at the middle school.
Kelly Fastvate, student assistance counselor at the high school.
Karen Jordan, Director of Secondary Special Education.
Lisa Sassy, Health Services Coordinator at the high school.
Sarah Petricido, social worker at Pine Tree Elementary.
Hi, Veronica Coletta, social worker at North Main Elementary.
And Maria DeLeo, school psychologist at the middle school.
In addition, we have several staff in the audience as well from PPS, if you guys would stand up. So there is a proverb that I like to talk about once in a while, and it's, if you want to go far, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. So we are here together, because we support each other, and we support each other's department. We are here to thank you guys for the presentation, for allowing us an opportunity to let you know what we do, to showcase our work, and to talk about where we'd like to go next. PPS could not work alone, and it's in collaboration with the Directors of Special Ed, Karen Jordan, and Eric Lula, that we work together and collaborate and get things done. So, who we are, as you can see up there, we are a highly skilled, dedicated group that address the social, emotional, and physical needs of our students, staff, and community. We truly appreciate the support of the Board of Education, we appreciate the time that you're giving us to really show you what we do. With Superintendent Rodriguez's overarching focus on mental wellness, social, emotional health has become a powerful district initiative, which has been embraced by not only the PPS Department, but by all of Monroe-Woodbury staff.
Since the presentation tonight will focus on the crisis intervention team and the prevention model, we thought we would show you some of the various facilities of the school psychologists.
Thank you.
The video depicts the competing demands that we face on a daily basis.
Oh, don't worry.
We hope.
We hope.
Elsie's going to have to get out and sing for us.
You wouldn't want me to do that. Turn this.
So.
writing, and the consultation, we contend with, we are an integral part of our prevention model. The partnership between the school psychologists and the social workers help us endure and support the children to gain social competence and academic success.
As school social workers, we have a unique role. Blending our training as licensed mental health professionals, we provide assessment, clinical support, and counsel to individual students, groups, and families, teaching skills and providing tools to address a number of student needs. We are also called upon to assist colleagues and administrators during times of crisis. We act as liaisons to outside agencies, providing the vital link between school, home, and the larger community. It is our job to see the whole picture when a student is struggling. We look at the barriers that get in the way of students being ready to learn, including those outside the four walls of the school building. including those outside the four walls of the school building.
Our students are a part of a large system and social culture that's creating taxing pressures and stress. We look at our students holistically, taking into account the outside influences of social media, peer relationships, strained financial resources, mental health and medical challenges, cultural factors, grief and loss, addiction, anxiety, family conflicts, and other factors. Using a strengths perspective and a growth mindset model, we're often connecting the moving parts of the individual student, family, community, and educational system to work together to mitigate and manage these stressors. I would say the best word to describe a social worker is a partner. And the best way to describe the role of a school social worker is to say, we help prepare students to learn, synthesizing students' strengths, challenges, and goals to make a plan for student success and achievement, because that's why we're here.
So, a little bit about prevention. I would have to say the strategic plan. The outcome of the strategic plan was four different task forces. The one that we worked on, of course, was the Student Behavior and Mental Wellness Task Force. It was developed to help us delve deeply into student and staff concerns, to highlight social, emotional needs, and to explore methods to address them. As a result, one of the outcomes was our first-ever professional development day on social, emotional wellness. We offered workshops to the entire staff, and we covered topics such as restorative justice, the opioid epidemic, stress management, mindfulness, teaching with an open heart, and trauma-informed classrooms. In addition, NW CARES has been instrumental in opening the dialogue between our students and us, the support staff. They are coming out of the darkness with their concerns about their own mental wellness. They're, we are demystifying mental health, taking away the stigma, and really supporting the students. They are open about their struggles, and they are open about wanting support and help. And I really would say that Monroe Woodbury CARES is really a huge part of that. We are definitely seeing an increase in students coming forward requiring risk assessments. We'll talk about that in a little bit. On a weekly basis, our clinical staff sees over 800 students. And that's not including the social, emotional lessons that occur in classrooms, not including the social, emotional lessons that go on in health classes as well. So we are trying to support our students the best we can, and they're looking for it. And they're great kids that we really want to just help support, but protect the factors so they can cope and become resilient. So we are definitely working on that. More Than Sad is another program that we have in the high school. It's a program about depression developed by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. This is a joint effort between the high school staff, PPS staff, and Orange, the Office of Mental Health Counselors. So between all our PPS high school staff and the Orange County Mental Health clinicians, they go into all our classrooms. They go into social studies classrooms in the high school. They go into the English classes in the high school. And they talk about the signs and symptoms of depression and how students can recognize those signs in themselves and in others. That we encourage the students who are struggling to seek help and to gently remind them that they are surrounded by caring adults and concerned peers that are there to support them.
So more on prevention is, there was a board policy adopted this school year on Narcan training, which was great. So Narcan is to reverse the effects of opiates like heroin. And so, just like an EpiPen, which, you know, reverses encephalaxis, and an AED, which is great, which we have available for everyone. This way, if you're at a concert and as a parent that appears under the influence, Narcan will soon, as soon as it's trained enough, be placed in every yellow box in every school building, including here at the Ed Center. So, with the EpiPen and by the AED. So all the emergency equipment, which is harmless. So if used on somebody that is not under the influence of something, it's a harmless medication. Of course, 911 should be called, so, which we appreciate the policy. And so now we had to roll out the training. And so we collaborated with the aid act, which is the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council of Orange County. They came in, did some training for the nurses, for administrators. Then they came back. They did it for the safety officers, for the physical education department, for the coaches, for the health education department. And then they are coming in April again, and they are going to do the bus drivers and attendants because they're often the person right there on hand. And they give you the free Narcan, which is great. So the next part is the health curriculum. We're really, really lucky that you guys have allowed us to have K through 12 health education curriculum. So we mostly have nurse teachers in the K-6 buildings. We work on the physical, social, and emotional health. We're really focusing a lot on the social, emotional health, so including stress and stress management, relaxation, yoga, breathing, who to go to for help if you notice a sign of sadness in a friend. And we start this from elementary level. Also, for the other safety issue would be, you know, who to take appropriate medication from. So that could be in a kindergarten, or you could take it from a parent or a doctor, and you move it along according to maturity level. So that's just great. And we move that along through 12. And then we have health ed teachers from 7 through 12, which is just great. The next is critical incident stress management. This is an intervention protocol. It's through BOSI's. I know Christina arranged for it, for, I think, all administrators and PPS staff. Sometime, I think, the beginning of July or the end of June, something like that. It was great. It mostly deals with traumatic events. What's like a psychological first aid. And so trauma is something that, you know, as a nurse, you think trauma and car accidents. But as a, as a school professional that works with all of these great people, trauma could be that, a divorce in a family, or their parent going through a terrible illness, or a student going through an illness, how that impacts everybody. So that trauma is something that we were all trained in, trauma management, which is great. The next thing is risk assessments. So we do risk assessments, you know, since I do the whole district. I've seen it in the K-1 buildings. I've seen it in the 2-5 buildings. I've seen it in the middle school and the high school. And what I see most is the collaboration. You know, as I walked in, I knew almost all of these people just from intervening and working with them in all, every year, which is just amazing, you know, to know, pop in a building and work with Maria, and then you pop in a building, you're working with these guys. So it's just great. To date, we have done at least 60 risk assessments. This year, I'm sorry, this school year. So, that's a lot. And then there's follow-up that goes along with that. Each, you know, they'll go through a little bit more on that. A lot of follow-up, a lot of collaboration with the family, and a lot of collaboration with, you know, everything else from then on. And my last thing is the revision of the Suicide Prevention Intervention Manual. I think everybody got a copy. And again, a collaboration, multidisciplinary, what you do, who do you do. And it's a great resource for everybody, new hires, people, just a reminder what to do, and it's a great tool. So that was revised, I think, this school year as well.
And I'm going to talk about that manual. So I'm going to talk tonight about the MW Suicide Prevention and Intervention Manual. This is unique to Monroe Woodbury. There are a lot of districts that are looking at us that want this manual, that want to get their hands on it. It's really important. And our team here, our PPS staff, has done an amazing job putting that together and putting that information together into that manual. One suicide in a community is too many. We need to be looking at our kids. We need to be constantly assessing our kids. We need to be looking at what are their needs? What do we need to be doing for them? We need to be working with health professionals in addition to our staff to try to prevent any suicide that we can prevent. If you look at the statistics up there, these are statistics that will tell you we need to be looking at our youth. Suicide is not segregated to one zip code. It is not segregated to one population. So if we look at the statistics up there, 13% of all children ages 8 to 15 experience a mental health condition. 50% of our children in this category don't receive treatment. Getting treatment for mental health issues isn't like that a child has the flu or a child broke their arm on the playground. If somebody fell at Central Valley or Sapphire or Smith Globe and they needed to go to the doctor and have their arm set, and it needed to be in a cast, a parent would take them there. The nurse would get them there. Not everybody still in today's age is open to saying, I'm going to take my child and I'm going to have them treated for a mental health issue. 50% of all lifetime cases of mental illness begin by age 14. And 17% of high school students seriously consider suicide. That does not mean that there was an attempt there, but they consider actually the act of suicide in some way, shape, or form. So this manual was created in 2007. And the reason that it was created was that it was due to our increased suicides in our district and multiple attempts in our district. These, these statistics up here tell us we have a lot of kids who are crying out. We have a lot of kids who are in need. We have a lot of kids who need help. And we need our team, and our team works so hard together, the PPS staff, to try to prevent this. As I said in the beginning, when I first said this was an important slide, it is. You go to meetings, you go to conferences, and people say, oh, you're from Monroe Woodbury. You created that manual. They've heard of that. They want a copy of that manual. Can we see that? Can we get our hands on that? So I just want to say, we are going to keep working hard. We need to work as a community together. We need to work as a PPS staff. We need to work as a school district and try to do the best job that we can in preventing suicide.
So knowing and understanding the roles and responsibilities of our PPS staff as well as all the prevention and intervention activities that we're involved in, you can see that we have the opportunity each and every day to work with our students in many positive ways. But of course, our top priority is always student safety. And no matter what is on, what is on our calendar, a safety crisis overrides any of our other appointments. And it's here where our team begins to assess and carefully address the level of our risk.
Various crises that we experience at the secondary level, elementary level, at all levels include suicide ideation, suicide attempts, self-harm, suicide, excuse me, substance abuse, physical abuse, and sexual abuse. Majority of our referrals come from students often reporting or exhibiting at-risk behaviors that prompt us to activate the crisis team and collaborate with support staff and administration. Other referrals come from peers, for example, through conversations or social media posts, teachers hearing comments in class, observing unusual behaviors, finding alarming responses or drawings on assignments. Parents also report concerns of mental instability and self-harming behaviors or threats. Administration have reported atypical responses to discipline or information learned at school meetings. We like to go through a mock case study to demonstrate the importance of following the steps in our manual.
So while I'm going through the scenario, there's just a bracketed visual up there that you can just follow along with. So this scenario, we started out with, it's starting right in the morning. I come into, I come in 7:00 AM, and I have a student named Jess who arrives at my door concerned about her friend Morgan, who's in 10th grade. She reports that Morgan sent her the following text messages late last night. "I'm so sad. I can't take it anymore. No one understands me. I don't think anybody will miss me when I'm gone." Additionally, Jess states that Morgan posted a picture on her Instagram page of a medicine bottle with the caption, "Goodbye to the people I love." So from that, I immediately call Morgan down from her class. While she's on her way down, I get the school counselor on the phone and have her come and meet me so that she can be a part of the process. So immediately, the teaming process begins. With the school counselor present, we start the assessment. We discuss what's going on, see her feelings. And after that discussion, Morgan does admit she was having suicidal ideations with a plan and specifically explained that her plan was to overdose on medicine she found in her parents' bathroom, which she had easy access to. In fact, she states that she has two painkiller bottles from their medicine cabinet and has them hidden under her bed. During the discussion, she also states that she's unsure of her safety and doesn't feel that she is safe from herself at this time. From that, I inform Morgan that I'll be reaching out to her parents about our current situation and asking them to join the building. After I tell her that, I step out of the room, and I leave Morgan with the school counselor, never leaving her alone. Once I leave the room, I locate the school social worker to collaborate with him. And we discuss the exact scenario and what should be the next steps. We determine she's a high-risk student, and the school social worker reaches out to Forwin's Hospital to see the availability for an evaluation and admission to their psychiatric hospital. At the same time, the hosp, at the same time hospitals' calls are being made, I contact Morgan's parents and explain the need for their presence. I rejoin Morgan and the school counselor in my office just to do a check-in and let her know that the parents are on the way to the school. After that, I come back out of the room, and I reach out to my house administrator to inform them of the crisis at hand. And she requests to be involved in the parent meeting when they arrive. The school social worker informs me that he finds out Forwin's Hospital, as well as two other hospitals in Westchester, are currently full, but they're going to get back to us once they do an updated consensus of bed availability. At this point, Morgan's starting to get restless. It's been a while. She's getting anxious, starting to regret actually opening up to us and saying that it was a mistake to confide in anybody. So at that point, we have to take a couple of deep breaths, work with her that this was the right decision to do, and we're going to get her the help that she needs. 9:15, while we wait for parent arrival, the options are discussed, what are we going to do now since Forwin's doesn't have a bed for her? We consider utilizing the Access Center at Orange Regional Medical Center so that they can further evaluate her and they can actually hold her until a bed is available. If this option is utilized, one of the crisis intervention team members would call the Access Center staff and provide them information of the current crisis and our concerns, so they have an entire backstory of what's been going on. After that, I join the school counselor, who's been sitting with Morgan throughout this entire process, and I inform her that the plan moving forward will have, will be to have her evaluated at the hospital to further assess the series of the symptoms. At this point, now she's getting really anxious. Her parents are coming in. She's afraid what she's going to tell them. And we try and calm her again and say, we can be a part of that conversation. It's not something you have to do on your own. 9:42, the parents arrive, and one of the crisis intervention team members will meet with the parents, along with the house administrator privately, to discuss everything that's been going on in detail prior to seeing their daughter. The parents in this situation, that they are on board with everything that we are agreeing to. And we ask for some more background information. You know, does she, is she on medication? Has she seen any therapists outside of school? We find out that she has seen a therapist. It was maybe two years ago, but she stopped. Parents are in support with every recommendation that we have, and they're in agreement to keep their daughter safe and get her the help she needs. At 10:20, the social worker receives a call that Forwin's has a bed available now. So the plans have now switched. We're going backwards. So this is told to Morgan and her parents as they're having an emotional but supportive conversation. So we let them finish up and say, hey, we have a bed open. We're going back to Plan A. With Forwin's on the line, we bring one of Morgan's parents into an office to begin the phone screening process for an evaluation. After the successful phone conversation, the evaluation is set, and we provide the parents with the parent notification of student risk form and the reentry form that are both in the, in the manual. The parent notification of student risk form, it reiterates the intervention, stumbling, reintervention plan for Morgan. And the reentry form is an agreement that after a high-risk screening takes place, that a meeting has to occur once they're cleared before they can come back to school. Either way, documentation of the intervention services are required for Morgan to reenter school. If Morgan is admitted to a hospital, parents will be encouraged to sign hospital consent forms to allow communication to occur between the hospital and school staff. Parents will be given appropriate hospital information, such as the phone number and address, prior to them leaving. And they'll get my extension and everyone else's so that they can be in contact with me. At 11:20, Morgan then leaves with her parents to go to Forwin's. And following that, we debrief with the house administrator. We talk about possible follow-up supports, such as the intensive day treatment program, outside therapeutic supports, and also in-school supports, such as counseling. Once we have that debriefing, I would go back to my room, my office, and complete a detailed at-risk report to document today's crisis and then create a folder with the reentry meeting form, a confidential release form to give to the parents to bring to the intake interview at the outpatient center recommended. So this is just one scenario that we created to give you an example of a crisis and every step that we go through. Of course, it would completely change depending on the time of day. If it happens, say, around noon, we've been in instances where we could be there till 4 o'clock. If there's a language... If there's a language barrier, we have to try and find a translator to come and interpret to the parent. If the parents are not agreeing to our recommendations, then that opens up an entirely different door. So the scenarios change, and it can create an entirely different crisis intervention plan.
So next steps. We would like to acknowledge the pivotal role that Mr. Beeler has played in helping us gain access to the top administrators and the officials at Orange Regional Medical Center. He's facilitated meetings between Superintendent Rodriguez, the PPS staff, and the hospital's behavioral health department. This department is where students in crisis are evaluated to assess the severity of the situation and to determine the treatment plan. We have our third meeting scheduled with Orange Regional Medical Center next week to continue our collaboration and to find ways to secure mental health resources for our students and families. We have also been exploring different ways to develop our own mental health clinic within the district, and something that we continue to explore, and we've got some really great ideas, and again, we can't thank Mr. Beeler enough for all of the work.
Very impressive, you guys. Facing their new program on Robo-Bear. They didn't want to get a lot of other schools involved until they worked out the details with you guys because they were so impressed with the way you were organized, the professionalism, everything else.
Thank you.
You're going to be the model for Orange County.
Your effort, really, truly.
Thanks.
And Karen Jordan is going to talk now about more of our in-district initiatives that we have started.
So we have made a commitment to provide clinical training for our school psychologists, school counselors, and social workers through dialectical behavioral therapy. During our November 6 Professional Development Day, we had Dr. Alec Miller as our keynote speaker. He spoke about preparing our youth for the mental health challenges and the well-being for our students and staff and our community. Dr. Miller's organization will begin training our staff regarding the principles of DBT to enhance the skillset of all of our clinicians in order to provide the right service to our changing student population. A group of our, thank you, our next steps will include implementation of thematic counseling groups to improve protective factors such as anger management, stress management, and resiliency, continuing with the Youth Mental Health First Aid Training for support staff and implementation of a social-emotional curriculum across grade levels, and our district has adopted Choose Love. A group of PPS staff participated in the Youth Mental Health First Aid Training last year, taught by the Mental Health Association of Rockland County. This program is an effective model for teaching staff how to identify a person in crisis, seek support for them, and to assist in a soft handoff to train professionals. Last summer, we were able to offer this program in district and train 30 of our bus drivers and 20 school safety officers. We plan to offer this training again this summer. Choose Love is a social-emotional curriculum developed by Scarlett Lewis, a parent who lost her son in the Sandy Hook shooting. The program is a K-12 curriculum that is scientifically proven, based on the five core social-emotional competencies, and it's free. It also has a community and family component. Scarlett was one of the presenters at our November 6 Professional Development Day. Teachers and clinicians throughout the district embraced her message of compassion, forgiveness, and strength, and have begun implementing the Choose Love program in their classrooms. We have plans for Scarlett Lewis to return to our district in the fall, to meet with our staff, visit classrooms, and provide support as we deliver this essential program. Lastly, we would like to thank Superintendent Rodriguez, the Board of Education, and the Cabinet for your unwavering support. We appreciate your commitment to our students and families and ask for your assistance as we create programs and secure resources to meet the vital social-emotional and physical needs of our students, staff, and community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very important. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I have to go.
I have to go. I just want to say that, you know, Don Beeler said that Orange Regional was impressed with the professionalism and the organization, as was I. I thought this presentation spoke to my heart, and I completely and totally felt all of your dedication and commitment to every one of our students and the level of concern that all of you had, as well as everybody else that's here with you.
Thank you.
So thank you for all that you did, for all that you do for our students, and it's clearly evident that you feel as much as you do by what we have. So thank you.
Thank you.
Lorraine?
Yes, agree, and it's really nice to see you all here, and I like, we're proactive rather than reactive. I have a couple of questions, and it's not to critique or anything, but it's just questions. So first, when we have students that come into the district that have, we'll say, an IEP or are classified, so we pretty much have an idea of maybe some of them have some emotional or certain mental issues, are we presenting the families with packages of all the supports that they can get in the community, such as, you know, OPWDD, you know, all those agencies that are out there where they may not have any idea? So has a package been put together in pre-K, because we get them at three years old? District takes responsibility at three years old? Or in kindergarten, when, if you don't have a child who has any kind of parents who may need some kind of support, do we have a package that we have been given?
Well, we have multiple resources based on the presenting condition that the family has. Oftentimes, families do come in with services from different counties, and we hook them up with Orange County to transfer those services over. Now, if they have a caseworker from the city, then they're going to have to find a caseworker over in Orange County, so we do help with that. We have resources for students when they come for kindergarten screening, so when they come for kindergarten screening, they have a whole packet of information about what's available in the district as well as in the community. As far as, it's case-by-case a lot of times, based on how they're presenting and what their needs are. Some students, based on their age, may need a SPOA application, some may need a system of care application. We do it case-by-case, and we do it based on how they're presenting and what they're interested in. So we do, we don't have, I can't say we have a whole portfolio, but we do have services and supports for them.
So I'm probably more geared towards like the OPWDD, because I know years ago, I think it was probably about four years ago, when you had them come in?
Oh, at least, yes.
And a lot of parents, a lot of students didn't know and weren't involved in that. And there are a lot of services that actually they can go for that take some of the brunt off of the school district as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And it prepares them, because there was something in, I think, the board magazine, newspaper that comes out about OPWDD just this last week.
What is it?
Office of People with Developmental Disabilities. And they're preparing, you know, once they leave here, when students leave here, where are they going?
Right. Well, we are in the middle, right, we're in the middle of interviews right now, and so I did spend a lot of time with families this week talking about, where are you at in the OPWDD process? Your child is, you know, 19.
They should have had it at kindergarten or first grade.
Well, you can do, yes, you can do OPWDD at a younger age and then reapply when you're eight. This family, as you know, with all the experience that we have, families, it takes a long time, and they can be denied several times. So we check on that, interview time to say, where are you at the process? Where are you at with guardianship? How can we help you? Like, what do you need the next steps for?
The other thing was, some of the prevention, I saw a list, and you're working with mental health providers, so if students or people, because you said, may not want to be home for treatment, so usually the outlet is maybe substance abuse is a possibility. So we had, I thought, every three months, we're going to try to host the Save a Life, that kind of went off kilter somewhere, where that can still address and speak to people because you have mica or you have cami.
Yeah.
You know what mica is, right?
Yes, mentally-chemically abused.
And you know what cami is. So if you're not chemically, if you're not mica yet, you could be chemically addicted and then mentally ill. So it's like, what came first, it really doesn't matter at that point. So that kind of is a segue to, how many counselors do we actually have in the schools, in the high school and the middle school, that are mental health and substance abuse counselors? Because I know, when Lisa Shino was here, there would be 400 kids in, I think, a couple of days that are in and out of her office. How do you get to address those students with one person? So how many are there that really are?
That's my busy office now. So they are in and out, and they are lined up, and they are waiting, and I try to get to everybody that I can get to. We also have Tom Carney, who is in the high school as well. So between the two of us, we are split with that. We also will send people to Lisa upstairs, who's, you know, in the nurse's office. So I think we do a pretty good job with.
We also have, as social workers, we're licensed mental health clinicians as well, and we're sort of peppered throughout the district.
Four of us in the district?
No.
So the middle school?
We have Jennifer as well, in our high school.
There's 50%, really, there's 50%, that's where it really is, it's in the middle school. How many are in the middle school? And do we need more? That's the question.
Right. You're asking.
So you could always use more.
Yes, absolutely. I would use more.
Right.
We acknowledge that it's overwhelming. Can we be honest about it?
Yes.
It is entirely overwhelming.
I can imagine, I'm a mental health school. I'll say how overwhelming.
The scenario that was presented is more than ideal. I don't think I ever saw a scenario that actually went that well.
That happened at 6:58. Many times, it happens at 10 of 2, before kids are getting ready.
On a Friday. And the other piece is that we didn't include that at 8:00 PM, 10:00 PM, midnight, we are texting that parent who's crying in the ER, saying, oh my God, they may not take them, they may take them, I'm hearing my daughter say things that I never heard her say before. That is the reality, you know?
So my next question, because...
Like, it doesn't end at 11:15 when they leave.
You said something very interesting. So I was a substance abuse counselor, so it's burnout. It's burnout, okay? It's very stressful.
It's compassion fatigue.
No, it's not. It's numbers. Sometimes it's just numbers and hours of the day, and...
But we have our own mental health. So the next question was, I was speaking to an 11th grader who had told me that half their class failed the test, and that teacher screamed and lost her mind. So my question is, who is helping the teachers?
Yeah. We do that too.
We do that too.
You're doing that too.
You do. Guidance counselors.
It's a big piece of the job.
Sure, absolutely.
It's not only the students that need mental health.
Employee assistance programs. We do.
But that will also become part of the training from Dr. Alec Miller, to help ourselves, take care of ourselves, and...
Yep, self-care.
Self-care. And that is part of the training that was conducted on November 6, and will continue throughout the year, so it's definitely recognized.
All right, I think that's it. Thank you. Thanks for your help.
No, I just want to say something, you know, we have by far the most amazing counselors, social workers, psychologists, you name it, we have it in this district. And if money was not the issue, we'd have twice the number of people that we have here. And as I said before, unfortunately, there are constraints, and we have to make decisions, right? We have to balance everything out. But I think that one of the things that you can tell from this group is that they're committed to our students, and the work that we all do, their work, our work, teachers' work, it's really hard to work in education, and I think that people sometimes forget how difficult it is. Our role is really to educate students, but we no longer do that, right? We have to be in the business of keeping kids safe, we have to make sure that they have, you know, they're mentally prepared to do what they do, and we have to educate youth and help you graduate so that you can be good citizens. The role of education has morphed into something much bigger than I did when I started in education, and so, you know, I applaud these people because they do it every day, and sometimes they are burned out, and, you know, I can, they'll come and visit, or they'll visit each other, but this is a class act in front of you, and I am so proud of them, and I know that as a district, we're all very proud of you because you do amazing work. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and a class act, but a class act that may need more support or more people, and I understand it's taxpayers' money, so, but it's the student's safety and it's the student's mental health, and it's, as you say, part of what we're doing now. It's not just reading, writing, and arithmetic. It's, you know, it's, we're in charge of a large and complex community, so. Thank you all. We'll now have a brief recess, five minutes, let's keep it five minutes, keep on going. Students, you may get your sheets on. Grab a seat, please, and we will resume the regular meeting of the Board of Education, February 6, 2019. We took a short recess. No board business was conducted during that. We will now have Book One of the 2019-2020 budget, presents Patrick Kay, Don Russell, Frank Scolante, Vias.
Boy, they know how to clear a room, yeah.
I know.
I don't think it's really you guys. Okay, let's get started. So I'd like to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to present to you this evening. We're going to, you're welcome. Be rolling out 2019-2020 Book One, and I'm going to do sort of an introduction to the budget at a very high level. I'm going to sort of discuss some of the challenges and issues associated with the budget. I'm going to defer some of the discussion about the property tax cap and state aid until March 6, our meeting on March 6. Our next meeting on the 20th, we'll be reviewing the building budgets. So I just think, based on, you know, the time factor, and we have about 42 slides to show you tonight, maybe we'll push that out to a later meeting. So specifically, we'll be hearing from Don Russell, our Director of Transportation, who'll be dealing with codes that begin with function code 5510, 5530, and 5540. We're going to hear from Peter Quaterini, from the Operations and Maintenance Budget, from Frank Scolante with Safety and Security, and Bargavias, who will cover data processing, computer-assisted instruction, central printing, and library slash media. And I like to remind folks, when we talk about the budget, we're talking about our general fund budget, our A Fund budget, that's the principal operating fund of the budget. The district also has a special aid fund, the F Fund budget, we have a school lunch fund budget, there's our budget and/or fund, but this is the principal fund, this is the fund that the public votes on, and, you know, this is the, by far, the largest, you know, fund, and the largest number of transactions, financial transactions are in the general fund. So before we got started, I thought I would just very briefly review the structure of a budget code. We did some of this at our board workshop, and so what I did is I plucked a couple of the reports that we covered, and I put them on this slide. I tend to call this the anatomy of a budget code. So the budget code has a certain structure, and it's made up of, you know, four or five parts. The initial part is the fund, identifies the fund up here in the upper left-hand corner, so I discussed this already, we're talking about the general fund, the A Fund. So with most of these reports, we're not going to show the fund, but the function here is a four-digit code that identifies the functional area of our budget, and this is a report on the right-hand side here that shows the function codes of Monroe Woodbury. And we begin with function code 1010, which is Board of Education. We have 1040, which is Board Clerk, 1060, District Meeting, which is essentially the board vote. We have 1240, which is the Chief School Administrator, the Superintendent's Office, 1310 is the Business Office, and so forth and so on. So the function code that begins with a 1 tends to be administrative. I mentioned, for the transportation codes, begin with a 555, so that identifies that as transportation. Instructional or teaching codes begin with a 2, so you'll see a teaching code would be 2110, and all these function codes and the conventions we use are prescribed by the Office of the State Controller. Here, to the left, is the, I put in the location code that we use in the budget code. The location identifies the building and/or administrative building. We're going to be using location codes much more in the upcoming budget, the 1920 budget than we have in the past, and I'm going to talk about this in a little more detail. Due to the Every Student Succeeds Act, it's federal legislation that requires school district to report both budgets and expenditures by school building, so this will really impact us when it comes to teacher salaries currently. really impact us when it comes to teacher salaries. Currently, we have a limited number of salary codes. We now have to have a salary code by building for teachers and the support staff associated with each building. I skipped over here. I went from function to location. But we also have a three-digit object code as part of the function, or the budget code. The object code identifies the object of the expenditure, or the type, the nature of the expenditure. So for instance, object codes that begin with a 1 deal with salaries. 49 deals with both these expenditures. A 2, a code that begins with 2, 201, is equipment or furniture. So that's three positions. I mentioned location is two positions. And finally, we have the program code. That's four positions in the budget code, and that is specific to the school district. So in our case, we do a lot with program codes. We have a lot of different programs. In some cases, it's sort of the same as the function code, but we will provide reports to you, and we have for this meeting, budget development detailed reports, some of which are sorted by the program code. They're by function code, but also sorted by program code. In the case of, I think, some of the library reports, we've sorted those by location as well. So there's different ways to see the budget. There's different ways to identify the areas that we're spending our money in within the budget. And I thought it would be worthwhile to just sort of go through this one more time, because these are the reports we're gonna be talking about the next few weeks and the next couple of months. Okay, so here I'd like to do a very high-level overview of some of the issues and the challenges that we're facing. So the first bullet I have here is the property tax cap. So everyone is familiar with this. This is the, I'm air quoting, the 2% cap on our tax levy. And, you know, the change for this year is the governor has proposed as part of his state budget to make the tax cap a permanent feature, permanent law. It had a sunset clause, and it seems like this will be made permanent. I think it's one of those things we've lived with since 2007, 2008. School districts and municipalities have adapted to it. And, you know, we've made changes that we needed to. It's tougher in a lot of ways than it used to be. But, you know, this is a new feature, and I think politically, it's probably gonna become law, permanent law. In terms of the specific levy growth factor, so that's the 2% in the 2% tax cap formula. And we talk about it sort of like a seven or eight-step formula. There we go. That we run through. And so for this upcoming year, the levy growth factor is actually 2%. And this is the piece that it's 2% of the Consumer Price Index, whichever is less. And if you recall, for this year, it was, the levy growth factor was also 2%. But the prior two years, it was actually below 2%. It was, I think it was 1.62%, and then .12% one year, where inflation was incredibly low. And so, you know, so this is good in one sense, that it's out now, actually, at 2%. You know, and the other way to look at it, though, which is bad, is inflation is increasing. So the CPI is at 2.44%, and yet our levy is capped at 2, you know, this factor. And so if that continued to happen, I think they may have to adjust the formula to deal with that, because prices are going up, and yet we're, our levy is restrained at 2%. So in terms of our specific case here, the other story that's notable is the tax base growth factor. And if you recall, and I'm gonna go into all the tedious details, as I said at the March 6 meeting, grind through the formula itself. But the growth factor deals with actual changes in the tax base of the municipality or the school district. And the last couple of years, like for this year, actually, it was 1.7%, which is relatively high. For Monroe Woodbury, for next year, it's dipped back down to about a half a percent. It's .56%. So that's gonna be a little bit challenging to deal with. The county-wide average is a little over 1% for the tax base growth factor. And the range of school districts in Orange County was a little over 0 to 6.29%, which is Curious Joel Union Free School District. So we're gonna, you know, monitor that. We're gonna talk more about that at an upcoming meeting. I alluded to this, the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, and there's another piece, the New York State Budgetary Transparency. So ESSA was federal law, which went into place, and New York State developed their own piece of legislation, their own financial reporting mandate, similar to ESSA. It actually, for New York State, that is going to impact us sooner than ESSA will. And we not only have to report expenditures with the New York State Budgetary Transparency mandate, we actually have to report the budget as well. And so that's affecting us for next year. And it requires, as I say here, the bullet, new building-level reporting of budgetary expenditure information. Additional budget codes will be required. I alluded to that. By building for salaries and other expenditures. So we're in the process of adding those budget codes. And I think it's something that districts are sort of grappling with, how to handle it. There was a handful of districts, about 76 districts, that were over a certain size and threshold that had to do this for this year. And we're in the second cohort or wave that would be doing it for 1920. So the governor's budget relative to state aid came out on January 15. And the overall increase was nearly $1 billion, 956 million, or a 3.58% increase. It was mostly targeted to high-needs programs and districts. The overall change for Monroe Woodbury, I would call a little disappointing right now. So our overall change in state aid is about 1 and 1/4% increase from our budget this year, or about $650,000.
Patrick, a little disappointing?
Well, I'm being kind.
I would say a lot disappointing.
The good news with...
Don't be kind to the state, Patrick.
Patrick, there's no good news.
Okay. The reassuring news with this is that, I've talked about the way the process works. It's usually the governor comes in sort of low, the legislature comes in a bit higher, and they sort of half the difference in the middle. So by the time, you know, the final state budget is put together, that number, I anticipate that would go up a bit. I have foundation aid as another bullet here. You know, again, I'm beating the old drum, the underfunding of foundation aid in our district. For the 1920 school year, if the foundation aid formula was running the way it was intended to run, we would have about 7, right here, $7.7 million additional foundation aid. And the cumulative balance, which is really quite stunning, since foundation aid was started in '78 to 1920 is about 100, just over $100 million that we've been short-changed due to that. Now, the governor has come out and said, I think, the school districts, more or less, get over it, everybody. It is what it is. I don't, like, it's almost like foundation aid is not gonna change. We're, it seems like, it seems like, you know, they, rolling this in over a three-year period where they would fully fund it is probably not gonna happen. That was more or less the message, I think, this past, you know, cycle from the governor. So, you know, again, it is what it is. It's disappointing. But when we talk about things, school, New York State School Boards, or ASBO, which is Association of School Business Officials, try to do, it's one of the things is to phase in, fully phase in, foundation aid, because it would be extremely beneficial to our district and many districts. Just as an aside, relative to foundation aid, I looked up a couple of the districts in our county. And the problem is that because they froze foundation aid, some districts are actually getting more than they are entitled to. There's a small district in Orange County that they're receiving about $580,000 in foundation, small number, very small number. We're getting about $31 million. But if the foundation aid formula was fully phased in, they would be getting about $150,000. So there are districts that are getting more than they should.
Right.
And there's many districts like this that are getting less. And it then becomes a political issue, where it's hard to take away aid from somebody and give it to somebody else. So I think that's where we're at with foundation aid. Let's see, the Curious Joel Union Free School District boundary change, that will take effect on July 1, 2019. So we've talked a lot about that over the last year and a half or so. You know, so 1920 will be the first year that we're actually feeling the pinch of that, the impact on the tax base. You know, the one known factor that we talked about was the loss in tax revenue of approximately, it's actually higher than 900, it's probably $950,000 for next year. So that's a challenge. You know, there were, as we discussed, maybe some costs we were hoping would go down, you know, so it won't be, the net number will be less than that. You know, but it's still gonna be tough to deal with. The good news, there's two good news bullets here at the end. Save the good news for last. So we have a moderate increase in health insurance premiums for next year. You know, as you know, we're part of a consortium of school districts in the county. And we took a 7% increase for this year in premiums, an 18% increase last year. You know, it was a bitter pill to swallow. And that has sort of paid off, and then the changes we made to the benefits. So the health plan is in much better financial shape. And so much so that our actuarial consultant says we can get by, not get by, more than get by, with a 1 and 1/2% increase, replenish our reserves, and actually continue to have almost like a positive fund balance the next two or three years out. So that's the good news. The contribution in the New York State Retirement System, you know, the employer contribution rate, so that's the rate that for every dollar an employee earns, we put in a certain percentage to the retirement system. That is good news as well. It's stable or trending down slightly. TRS looks like it's gonna go down a little bit. We just got a bulletin today, administrative bulletin. And ERS, which is for the non-certificated employees, that's no change. Still 15.7%, which is pretty high. And when you think about that, like, that kind of contribution for a 401K account would be unheard of, right? So for every dollar somebody earns, we contribute 16 cents to the retirement system. So it's still a big nut. But it's good. No change, no increase is better. A decrease would be even better. But those are some good news stories in the budget, and will give us some room for some of the other increases that we're gonna talk about shortly. So any questions on that slide? Yes?
You mentioned the loss of revenues from KJ. And I was just curious, have we heard anything? I know that then Assemblyman Scoofus now, Senator Scoofus is gonna try to pass some legislation to get us some money. Do we know anything about, instead of that?
Yes, we pursued that. And it was, I think you're alluding to the change to the state aid formula, where we eligible for reorg instead of building aid. It was something that we were trying to do. And I think in lieu of that, what Senator Scoofus now has done for us is enabled us to get a $925,000 grant through a state facilities program. But I think at the end of the day, the change to the state aid formula was just too heavy of a political lift. It had the potential to affect other districts, you know, allow other districts to receive additional state aid. I, Elsie, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's something that we maybe is entirely finished. We could bring that up again. Things change.
I don't know if it's finished. Nothing is ever finished, right?
Right.
I think that we can continue to pursue that, now that the Assemblyman is the senator.
That's right.
And he has been very supportive of us. Unfortunately, at the time, they were, it became a big issue, because what we were looking for is a change, a slight change in the legislation. The legislation read, when two school districts combined, we wanted it to be when two school districts divide. In our case, we were losing property, and we felt that, you know, a slight change in the legislation would be very good for Monroe Woodbury. Fortunately, not everyone else didn't agree with that.
Right.
But I do not believe that that is dead, because we will be visiting them in March, and we will continue to pursue that avenue.
Right. That's what I would say, too. We'll continue to pursue.
So what would that grant, what would you need? What would be the prerequisite to go ahead and apply for this grant? Because they were saying other schools, the other offer was other schools could go ahead and receive same. A grant is a grant. Anyone can really apply for grants. So what type of grant would this be? Something that is just specialized to us?
Are you referring to the grant that we're actually in the process of applying for, or the change to the state aid formula that we pursued?
This shift to this grant, that would be $925,000.
Okay. That grant is through the New York State Dormitory Authority, and it has to do with facilities. So what...
But anybody can get that. Any school.
Yes. Yes. But, well, I don't know a lot about that grant, Lorraine, but, and I had the feeling that we were earmarked, you know, with that grant. It's still a process. The application is with DASNE right now. I don't know if anybody can apply, anybody can, you know, be approved for that. It felt like that's not the case.
Because we have a law somewhere, so that's a positive for us.
Correct. It was a vehicle to help and support our district. Right. It was a means. That's the feeling I had.
And that's a one-year grant, or is that...
It was a one-time grant.
Oh, it's a one-time?
One-time.
Oh, one-time.
Yeah. I mean, that's the other thing, that the property tax impact is annual, right? Every year that harms us. And you know how it works, is everybody else just pays a little more. You know, that's the way that works. So...
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
That's something we can talk to Scoofus about.
I was gonna say, we'll see him.
When we're gonna be, we're going up to Albany.
That's fine.
You will see him, and we will see him. We should say the same thing.
I can tell.
Real safe.
Yeah. Hey, we had this event in our middle school, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So moving on. So these are just some upcoming budget dates. I won't go through everything, but our next meeting, we're gonna do the building-based budgets. On March 6, Dr. Hassler and I will do Books 2 and 3. Also talk about state aid and the tax cap in excruciating detail. We're gonna talk about staffing personnel on March 27. On April 10, we'll have the Superintendent's Recommendation, the Board. The Board would adopt on or about April 25. And we have our public budget hearings, so that's its statutory requirement. We'll mail our budget notice within that window. And on May 21, it's the statewide annual meeting, basically just the budget vote date. So that's all I had. I'd like to turn it over to Dawn Russell, our Transportation Director, who will talk about our transportation budget.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Well, I started out today as a bus attendant, the break of day, and then I had my director hat on. And then I was a school bus driver this afternoon. And the reason I even say that to you is because, honestly, you know, I'm in my room, at my desk, pushing papers all day long, and watching the map, and watching the buses go on the map. But when you're out there in that bus, and you're with the kids, and I met kids this past week that I've only ever seen their name on paper. And to actually just meet this person, it was, it just, you know, it just makes you appreciate everything that the bus drivers, the Monroe Woodbury bus drivers, and our staff, and our dispatchers who are out there driving and covering for bus drivers, all the things that they do, and how much they love our kids. And, you know, so I just, you know, wanna give a shout out to them. I don't get, often get a chance to do that, so thank you. All right, so, oh, I get to, I get to drive.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. The proposed transportation budget, can you hear me okay? The proposed transportation budget of $5,307,021 is broken down into four main categories. These are the general operation, the garage building, contract transportation, and bus purchases. Tonight, I'm gonna highlight the portions of the budget with the most significant changes. And if you have any questions on any specific budget area that I haven't covered in this presentation, then you can please ask me at the end. This year, we'll be asking the Board to approve the purchase of 11 vehicles to replace 11 vehicles that have traveled a combined total of 1.4 million miles. And these will include six 72-passenger buses, and they will replace 61 passenger buses that were purchased in 2007. And then also five 29-passenger vans that were purchased in 2007. Proposition 2, or the bus purchase code, has increased by approximately $4,000, or just under 4% as necessitated by the Department's Schedule of Replacement Plan. The largest portion of the general operation code is gas and diesel. According to Gas Buddy Fuel Price Outlook, the cost for fuel in the upcoming year is on the rise. Last year, we budgeted $1.85 a gallon for gasoline, and we've actually been spending about $2.04 per gallon. The 2019-20 prediction is more of 2.17 a gallon. The 2019-20 prediction is more of $2.17 a gallon. And as far as diesel, we budgeted last year, for this school year, current school year, at $1.90 a gallon, we're actually paying $2.11 a gallon, and the prediction is for it to be $2.60 a gallon for diesel for next year. So we still participate in the diesel fuel cooperative bid with Clarkstown. It doesn't cost the district anything to be a part of that. Sometimes we could save as much as $40,000, and we could save as little as $15,000. That's on diesel, but it's still a savings, you know, no matter how you look at it. So we will continue to participate, and we purchase our gasoline off of New York State contract to get the best price. Our general operation increases in Code 5510 also include the purchase of a snow scraper system. That's what you see in the center right here. Mr. Esrati and I have spoken that, about that several times, as he rides past the bus garage to get home, and sees us out.
I want the blower that blows everything.
I know, well, we'll, we'll upgrade, it'll just take a little time. We'll start, we're going to start small, yeah.
We don't go to school with stuff, so why?
We're already too loud.
We need to have the bus.
We come in the morning.
So, if you see up here, this is, I don't think this is actually, it is, okay. There we go. So, see the stands on either side?
Yes.
That's what we're current, we stand on those, they're OSHA-approved stands, and we pull snow off the top with ladder, off with special snow tools. We would still have to do that when we get ice, because I don't believe that, from what I understand, for people who have the snow scraper system, it's probably not going to scrape off the ice if it's that hard. So we may still have to resort to the stands, we're still going to need our staff, we're still going to need our snow team, we're still going to need those buses moved around the lot, so that we can clear the rest of the parking lot. It's, it's a big undertaking, and so we use our time on delays or weekends to catch up on snow, on snow removal. Over here, you see Barney, the school bus. Well, Barney is going to replace Buster. Buster's 31-years-old, he's the same Buster that we purchased 31-years ago, he's been fixed.
Now, are all our buses going to look like that?
Well, this is, the reason that we're going to get Barney is because Barney is a flat front, and he looks just like the Monroe Woodbury buses. So, it's the same company, you know, and I think you could, you know, the fire department buys them, and this is our training, this is invaluable training, so it's not.
What, what does it do?
Where does it go?
Looks like a good toy.
So, it's a, it's a robot, and, you know, it works on, you know, the person would be hiding in the closet, say, with, and that's the voice, you're all hooked up, and you, it operates, the eyes blink, it talks.
Oh, it's for kids?
Yes.
It's not like training the drivers?
Oh, no, no. It goes, it goes to all of our preschools, yes.
That's an educational tool.
It's an education.
And Dawn's going to drive it.
It is.
It'll be Dawn's voice.
Yes, yes. So, it's time, it's time.
We lost it.
You're going to just keep charging it in?
Yeah, so, so what happens is, we start to schedule around this time of year, so in the spring, we're ready to go out to all the preschools. We do the training program, Buster goes on a wheelchair bus, it'll be Barney, and gets, you know, strapped in, and goes with the training team, and they go over and they do, you know, bus safety. And, you know, this is how the kids, this is the foundation, and how they begin to learn about school bus safety when they're in preschool, and they, they love it, and they remember everything about it, because it's so much fun.
Dare I ask what this thing costs?
Uh, he's about, is under $10,000, but for 30 years, you know, break it down.
Straight line depreciating.
Yeah.
So the big line item that's in there is for the scraper?
The scraper is, yes, it is the big line item, and, and that's 30, that's like $32,000, you know, in that vicinity, for the snow scraper.
But there's a projected savings that goes along with, with the purchase, over time?
Well, over time, but it won't take that much time, you know, if we're spending $15,000 in pulling snow, you know, over time.
So why did our equipment go down substantially, like, almost 70%?
No, the, actually, the garage equipment, the 5530 code, well, we're, this is the, well, when we get to the 5530 code, that's the, this is, this is more in the operational, this is trans equipment, 5510, we're going to move on to the 5530 code, and that's where the rest of our garage equipment is in there.
What type of a time savings is this going to provide, like, for getting the buses out?
Well, we'll be new at it, so we'll have to, you know, but, you know, you just, you need your people to get in, and you'd start up the buses, and then you're going to drive them through, instead of having one person drive it through, and two people pulling, you're just going to, you know, you, you probably could use half your team, you know, and I'm sure it will be, it'll be, it's more, and we're more concerned, we're very concerned about safety. It's cold, it's snowy, it's slippery, it's, you know, it just makes sense.
It's reaching up that stair.
We have 100 vehicles outside, you know, and it just takes time, and it could, it could be the difference of us opening or not, you know, if we can get them, if we can get the buses cleaned, because we are not by law allowed to drive off the property with a big, you know, hunk of ice on the top of the bus.
Even coal would.
Right, exactly.
Let me ask a question. The, the, in here, your equipment, rent, and maintenance went up $50,000, which I'm assuming is this, and Barney there, the equipment itself went down $90,000.
Right, because last year, what we had in here, in this code, was we had the equipment that we used to, the salter, the new service truck, the other plow, you know, so all of those things were in this budget code last year, and so this is much less.
And then, but the equipment?
But then when we get to the 5530 garage equipment, I'll explain that, yeah.
But still in the same code, 5510, and the maintenance went up like 225%?
That's this.
Hold on. Now, one second. This is this year and last year, 5510.
So looking at 5510?
Right, the adopted budget last year?
Was 19.5, and this year, 63, so it's 225% increase.
Because, if you, are you, are you looking at the, with buses in or buses out?
Because I'm just looking at the numbers, coming out of the general fund.
It's 43.781 is the dollar change.
Forty?
Which code is it?
Exactly, so, 5510, 42208, the fifth one down on the scraper.
That's your scraper.
I think it's your scraper.
Yeah, I'm assuming that's the scraper.
This code, though, if you see, this is 5510 201, trans equipment.
Right, it's all of, everything that's in 5510.
That's here, and it, it's $41,270.
Right, and last year, it was 130,500.
Right, so if you go down a few lines, and you look at trans equipment, rent, and maintenance, it was 19.5 last year, and now it's 63, so we're just asking, the percent change is showing a 224.
Okay, 422.
It's $89,000, but now it's taken out of there, and now it's moved to that.
Okay, so, all right, I can explain. So, in, in that code, the 422 code, so we bought the GPS, we bought GPS last year, and we had that installed, so now, we will have an annual maintenance and support for that, and that's $46,368.
And we didn't have that before.
No, so it was 110,000 to buy and install, and so that'll be, you're welcome, and.
So you also have an offset on the top line, because you had, you have a negative number, yes?
Right.
I suspect they didn't buy as much stuff.
Exactly.
So, you know, the commercials where you put a mark on your car, and if you just get the snow warm like that, maybe it's something, that's pretty cool.
We just had to figure out how to get it up there, yeah, I know. I'm waiting for Mr. Esrati to, to demo something for me. Did you have a question?
Silly question, I don't mean to put you on the.
It's okay.
I thought I heard you say, you know, you still need the staff, because there are days where there's ice, and you're still going to be needing the same staff, so I'm wondering, how does the savings actually occur, is it through just reallocation of their time, and, and things of that nature?
It should, it should take less time, because you're not, it's not the labor-intensive, when you watch a bus go through, and two people are pulling snow, it's so slow, you know, because every five buses or so, you literally have to rest your arms. It takes, it takes eight hours, more, 10 sometimes, just to clean the tops of the buses, move them around, but in this case, they'll drive through, the snow will fall, you'll have to have a mechanic have to pick it up and move it over the gate, you know, over the fence, but we have 12, we do have about 12 people that come in, and we're very fortunate, you know, most people, most operations are lucky, they can get two people to come in to do that.
And it could, it's a matter of, of opening or not opening sometimes.
Right, and so this way, we still need the people with commercial driver's licenses that will start the buses up, move them around the parking lot, safely drive them through here, while they scoop up the mess, and then, you know, put it, put it back in its slot again. So, but it shouldn't take as many people to do that.
But when you're saying scoop it up, I mean, they're not standing there now, going from that on the roof to a shovel, I mean, you're talking about, you're using like a Bobcat machine or something to get rid of the snow that's dropping.
Exactly, which we do now, but we do it, it's just done at a more slow pace, because it's just physical labor, you know, it's physical work. And, and you know, when it was minus, it was, you had to keep pumping in, it was negative temperatures, and.
And there's no options for covering anything, or like carport?
That would be wonderful, Peter could build us.
Like a carport, right?
Well, like what we have right now at our bus garage, if we had two more of those, we wouldn't need any of this.
What are they?
You know, buildings. Well, we have 162, and there's more than 100 outside, so, you know, we would need, we would need.
Okay, can we keep going, please?
Yes.
If you, if you have other questions, we can ask at the end, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, we have a lot of presentations tonight.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And I, at nine o'clock, I have to take my jar.
So, while the garage building equipment budget, 416901, is the smallest portion of the transportation budget, it's seen the largest increase. And that's because we're looking to replace a 15-to-20-year-old transmission jack, here, they're all labeled, replace the snow pusher and coupler attachment, which goes on the tractor, that's up on the right-hand side. It looks small, but it's a huge box, and it moves snow rapidly. We have one, but it's very old. A brake meter, which is on the bottom, and that measures the stopping distance of a bus, it's what DOT uses when they come to our operation, they use that unit, and they put it on the windshield, and it measures the stopping distance, and we have to make sure our buses are, are going to pass inspection. We're, we don't have one, but this would be new to us, the parts wash sink, it comes with a 12-week service, and you dispose of the contaminated waste in that barrel. That, that itself is only $1,000, but this is where the big expense is in this budget. So these are our lifts, where that bus is up in the air. Our lifts have surpassed their useful life, so this is a choice that we had. We, we have four of those, so even though they work in unison, they go up and down together, they're individual lifts. If you buy new ones, they cost $110,000 each, and they are not covered by state aid, in the ground lifts are not aidable. However, you can repair the lifts for approximately $50,000 each, and then you're going to get 62% aid. So it's kind of like, our mechanic explains it, it's like, you have a car, and you replace the engine, you know, so you're, you're still going to have your car, and it's going to run, for probably as long as it ran when you first got it. So, and it will prob, it will cost us in the end, you know, say, $76,000 versus, you know, after aid, versus $440,000, where we're not going to get any aid. So we've decided to take that approach. And then while we're doing that, those portable lifts that you see on the bottom right, those are what we have, they've been on loan to us for the past year, because the parts are on order to repair the lift, they're coming this coming week, it's been a long wait, because we're in a queue of many people that are waiting. So, we are using those portable lifts, and then when all is said and done, and the lifts are all operational again, we'll have this portable lift, because we no longer have a body shop. We'll move the lift, portable lifts, out to the body shop, where we can use them for work, transmission work, where the bus will be laid up for a period of time, or, you know, just an extra area where we could service vehicles. So, we'll always be able to use it, and especially if our permanent lifts are down. So, that's our big expense. Here's our favorite, contract transportation. So outsourcing of various non-public school programs allows us to share resources with surrounding districts. The population growth of students attending KJ-associated non-public schools caused us to exceed our 17-18 anticipated budget of $700,000, with a year-end expenditure of We anticipate ending the 2018-19 school year at $919,000, where we had 805 budgeted. The budget figure for the 1920 school year of $952,786 represents the anticipated growth outside of the annexation area, as well as the estimated 2% CPI. It could be much less, or 2% is about as high as it's been. So currently, there are 485 eligible KJ-area non-public students who are registered with the district, and applied for transportation by April 1st, that's right now. But there are many students, more than that, more than 100 more, who are registered students who could apply for transportation by April 1st. So the letters have been mailed, and we'll have to see what the response is this year. So while we may experience an initial savings with the annexation of the land to Kirshool School District, the continued growth on the outside of the annexation boundary within the Monroe Woodbury School District, for example, Chester area, Woodbury area, the Monroe area, you know, we, we, we may save a route package or two from the annexation, but we, it, it could cost us a route package or two more. So, we, we hesitate to make the budget less, because, you know, it, it's, each year, it's, it's gone up more.
We'll just have to start using Uber, that's all.
I know, there is an Uber. And then, the, so, that, that's in the, that's in the purple in the back, but in the red, that's our BOCs, that's our COSER, our special ed out-of-county that we share with BOCs, and, you know, that's held steady, and so we just anticipated a 2% CPI increase there. So to summarize, the combined bus purchase and general fund budget has increased by $675,920, or about 14.5%, 14.6. This increase is largely driven by the growth in non-public school contract transportation costs, the anticipated gas and diesel increases, as well as the need to replace aging garage building equipment.
And anybody have questions at this point from the board?
I just wanted to ask, the 11 buses that we are going to pretty much retire, do we get any percentage back?
Want to buy one?
What do you do with it? Does anybody, do we get any kind of like discounts for buying another 11 buses?
Well, we don't, we don't usually trade them in, we find that we get more, our buses, we keep them longer than we ever did, which is an industry standard, you know, people don't retire buses at 10 anymore, they're, they could be 15 by the time they go, so they're not as valuable as they once were. So what we do is, we kind of, we get our new buses delivered, we, we don't just surplus right away, we, because those buses are, you know, they, they're under warranty, and so we iron out the kinks with them while we still have our other vehicles, and then we slowly retire them, like, you'll see them always on the agenda, three, four, five at a time, or two, or three, or four, and then, you know, and actually, we find we get, you know, more value on the vans than we do on the big buses, because vans are used from anything, from a recreational vehicle to, you know, anything, so, and so we get $3,000 or $4,000 for them by the time we're done using them.
And you mentioned about getting with the cost of the gases, and with the cost of diesel, are any of these flex fuel?
Alternate fuels?
Flex fuel?
Yeah, no. Unfortunately, the, our, the buses that we buy, the type D buses, they're, they haven't made those yet in alternate fuels, there's no propane, there's, there's only CNG, but that infrastructure alone is, could be a couple million dollars to look at, so, unless we were going to start to change our standardized fleet to something else. So unless we were going to start to change our standardized fleet to something else, we'll have to wait, you know. The vans, you know, we could, we could look at that, but not...
They don't have any sort of propane-based fuel buses for the size that we need?
Not the type that we have. So our, the way our parking lots are set up in our schools, you know, you've seen it, it's very tight, and we, we pull out, it's like a ballet, right? I mean, there's no, when you have a conventional bus, if we don't have the type D, conventionals do come, the ones with the hood.
I don't know what type D is.
Type D is the flat front.
Thank you.
And the conventional bus has the big hood. So they don't have that turning radius that we have. We would have to reinvent the parking, number one, and then we would have to, it would take years for us to transition to something else, you know, because we don't, we don't replace the whole fleet, we do it so slowly, so...
But if they did, we, we could explore that as an alternative.
Yes.
And base diesel versus propane, play one off the other for...
We could.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you. Oh, clicker.
Give that to Peter. So next, we have Peter, he's going to go through the building's ground.
Hello and good evening. Before I start my presentation, I'd like to reach out and thank Andre, my assistant, my custodial staff, maintenance staff and ground staff for the great job they do day in and day out. Some budget, excuse me?
That's it, that's the time.
Oh, we didn't, it's quickly, I thought you clicked it before I gave it. We're done. I came in at zero, we're done. Budget goals for this year, we continue to maintain a high level of cleanliness and maintenance, maintain the capital investment in the district facilities such as boilers, asphalt and fields, replacement of maintenance equipment that are no longer serviceable or reliable, like Dawn, our stuff wears out also, continue to conserve energy to minimize the just cost to operate. Operations and maintenance overview, this just gives you a little background on what they do daily. The custodial staff cleans roughly a million square feet nightly. That's like having 333, 3,000 square foot homes, which is basically the size of your houses, or six 3,000 square foot homes per staff member clean daily. 229 acres are maintained by eight ground staff, relates to about 29 acres per person, not that they do 29 acres per day, but that's what we, we have. They also prepare the playing fields for school and community sports, and with over 1,260,000 total feet, our maintenance staff observes the district's investment in facilities and contributes to the educational mission by ensuring facilities are comfortable, safe and secure, which helps students, teachers and staff reach their potential. Renovation project completed this past year. Pine Tree in Central Valley had the transformer upgrades that went right, right off from the road underground, new transformers, new switch panels, so they're up to grade now. High school BNC house office with carpets replacements, we try to do that as necessary. High school water heater on sea level was replaced. Middle school gym dividing door was replaced with curtain, that was the old dividing door, was a solid door, now it's a curtain, that works a lot better, a lot easier. The middle school is completely sanded down and refinished. The middle school loading dock, the door, the outside door, it's an exterior door, was rotted, so that needed to be replaced. The grounds garage, again, there were three overhead doors, the building is, like Dawn was talking about her building, probably 40, 50 years old, it needed to be replaced, and we did that. The bus garage, we spray foamed the garage, the inside of the garage where she keeps the buses, to insulate the garage and remodeled dispatcher's office in the, in that area. North main and middle school installation of vestibules for security purposes, that's something we've been working on, you all talked earlier about security. We worked with Mike and Joe in their buildings to put in vestibules, which will now slow down people, it becomes a security barrier. It also helps with the heat and, or lack of heat, when the doors open up, there's a draft in between. Renovation projects for this upcoming year, this summer. High school lecture hall, room 130, we do a lot of presentations out of that, I know Elsie does seminars in there, and so it hasn't been redone since it was built, so we're ripping it out completely, new carpets, new chairs, we'll paint it, it'll be nice again. High school gym floor, we finished it like we did in the middle school last year. We're starting a project where we're going to do one gym every year, so they haven't been done in years and years, so every year we'll do a gym floor, even in the elementary schools, and they'll bring them up there, good for 10, 12 years, 15 years, till you have to do them again. Pine Tree library, we placed on the carpet, again, it's old, and these we replaced, so that'll bring them up. Middle school left side replacement front doors, again, they're old, they're 20 years old, they're beginning to rot out, they're beginning to move, so it becomes security and safety. Middle school replacement of pipe insulation for the air conditioning water line, I don't know if any of you know it, but there's air conditioning in the middle school for some of the offices, and the chilled water runs throughout the whole building. Some of the insulation, again, it's getting old, it leaks because it condensates, and then you see it through the tiles, people think it's mold, so this, it'll save that aggravation there. Smithclove roof curbs, we're putting in extra exhaust fans, and the, the fans now are bigger than what's there, so we have to add new curbs and make them bigger, so that's part of a roofing project. Operation and maintenance costs, the summary for this, this upcoming year. Using better equipment and getting better handling expenses, we have come in with a 0% increase on this budget. That being said, if you look closely, you will see a $300,000 increase in operations and maintenance budget due to changes in the way we are budgeting for renovation projects. This money will come from the inter-fund transfer to the capital fund, therefore showing a $300,000 decrease and balancing the budget at zero. So you see it high on one, where you didn't see it last year, it was kind of buried, it was at the end, now you see it right out front in the 1620s. Ongoing look ahead, which is the fun part everybody likes to see, looking forward to completion of our summertime project consisting of two turf fields, and the HVAC project at the high school, which is changing the chiller out and the cooling tower. Continuing to work on a five-year capital project, discuss the pros and cons of an energy performance contract, I know Jill two weeks ago talked about, this is more of a mechanical energy performance contract, it's lights, it's LED lights, it would be boilers, it's that kind of energy performance contract that we're talking about. Continue to improve the conservation of energy, continue use of chemical-free auto scrubbers in green cleaning, that's New York State mandates, that's also good for the kids and for the school. Continue to be physically responsible for custodial supplies and overtime control. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions?
I was just going to elaborate a little bit on the, Peter alluded to the transfer of capital, and in the past, we would have a line at the end of the budget, transfer of capital, transfer to special aid fund, and that, it would be $300,000 typically when we moved to the capital fund, and then we would spend it out of the capital fund.
Right.
So instead of doing that, because these weren't true capital projects, they were renovations, we're adding it as a renovation, we added code to the 1620 operations and maintenance budget. So you'll see a 299,000, I think it's 204, increase, but there's a corresponding decrease at the end of the budget status.
Right.
You also mentioned that the sanding of the floors, how many times can the floors be sanded? I mean, you said they last a long time, but...
That high school gym hasn't been, so this will be the first time.
Okay.
It's 20 years old, so you'll get another 15. We'll all be gone by the time that floor is re-replaced.
Wow. And if you were planning on being gone, you got to be gone now.
Be gone.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Rodriguez, cabinet members, colleagues in the Monroe-Woodbury community. After very careful review and consideration, and just one day more than a week away from the tragic Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School shooting back on February 14, 2018, down in Parkland, Florida, that killed 17 students and seriously injured many others, I prepared a brief overview and summary to support my recommendations regarding the Safety and Security Department's 2019-2020 budget requests for the district. As Superintendent Rodriguez said during her presentation earlier, it is truly a multi-prong School safety staff, many of our officers are retired law enforcement professionals, police, corrections, military, they bring many years of experience from their organization to our district. Our school safety officers cover all schools and many non-school-related events during school days, nights and weekends throughout the year. They're assigned strategically in key locations, especially at the high school and middle school, which require unique attention to detail and large student-staff populations. The officers conduct traffic control for arrivals, dismissals and large events, and make tours of inspection throughout their shift to identify any potential safety issue. School safety staff continue to be a valuable asset to our Safe School program. Security and emergency preparedness budget, over the last several years, a substantial amount of money and resources have been invested in the Monroe-Woodbury School District's school safety program. I continue to work closely with our technology department to take the best investment approach with obtaining the latest security solutions for our district. Working within the scope of our strategic plan, the advice of our threat assessment teams and the support of the smart school bond, our infrastructure continues to obtain the necessary cabling upgrade and is growing to support our planned technology initiatives. Over the summer, we participated in a technical threat and vulnerability assessment district-wide by our state and local law enforcement partners, the New York State Police, Woodbury PD and Monroe PD. We identified some operational changes and made staffing adjustments to enhance security and continued to use, to use the findings to provide us a roadmap moving forward. We identified a full-service school security integration company provider to assist us with a multi-layer plan and approach, which will expand our camera coverages and improve access control protocols at all the schools. Some of our initiatives that are in place and coming soon are a combination of technology upgrades and much-needed staff development. Visitor management, Raptor, at all the schools. Raptor is a web-based visitor management system designed for K-12 schools. It is currently trusted to protect over 18,000 K-12 schools across our nation. It has the sex offender database connected to it and is responsible for alerting officials of attempts to enter the schools. It is credited with the arrests of numerous substandard sex offenders that have crossed state lines. Additionally, it has been credited with over 250,000 custody alerts since its inception in 2002. We piloted two units, one at the high school, one at the middle school, last March, and we rolled it out to the five other schools district-wide back in September 2018. This is a welcome initiative which augments our existing access, access control protocols. We've been providing staff development with all our access control greeter staff to enhance visitor management, maintain consistency and improve the way they handle all visitors to our buildings from the moment they buzz the door. Also, we piloted an anonymous alert anti-bullying safety reporting application for smartphones program at the end of last school year. Also, after careful review and consideration, with other smartphone reporting technology options that were available, we selected and are actively using anonymous alerts. This technology is utilized in thousands of schools throughout the United States as well. It continues to empower students to help themselves and others by anonymously, anonymously reporting bullying, safety issues quickly and securely to school officials. This has assisted and continues to help us remain proactive as we receive messages from students and concerned community members. Message topics for submission include student bullying, cyberbullying, family issues, self-cutting, self-injury, drug and alcohol abuse, student depression, sexual harassment, gang-related issues or unusual student behavior, just to name a few. This is another outlet to see something, say something, and a useful tool at both the high school and middle school. For example, from September to February 4th, approximately five months, the overall statistics, we had 56 incidents reported, 11 incidents per month on an average, 66% came from the high school, 33% came from the middle school. The top three types and three locations were, 27% was drug slash alcohol user dealing, 18% was depressed, depression, cutting, self-harm or suicidal thoughts, and number three was bullying, cyberbullying, harassment or teasing. The locations was 18% were in bathrooms and online social media, and about 13% of the reporters did not disclose their location. But it only takes one. Care, community awareness, emergency response, this is one of our most powerful and effective initiatives. Our group of federal, state, county and local law enforcement, first responders and elected officials continue to meet with us collaboratively at least twice a year. They provide us with valuable input and support during all our drills and training exercises. We continue to work closely with our local law enforcement for mutual benefit and training opportunities. Back on December 11th, our superintendent hosted her monthly administrative council meeting with all the district leadership. We hosted a staff development awareness session during that meeting by the FBI. We had an Assistant Special Agent in Charge, ASAC, John Dolan of the New York Special Operations Cyber Division, and Special Agent Barbara Daly, who has been and is currently the Behavioral Analysis Unit Coordinator and liaison between local, state and federal law enforcement entities and the FBI's Behavioral Analysis Units. Special Agent Daly has been involved with the FBI's Active Shooter Program since 2007 and regularly speaks and provides awareness and training on the topic of identifying, assessing and managing emerging threats and targeted attacks. Assistant Special Agent in Charge Dolan and Special Agent Daly provided important facts to our team and fielded questions. We continue to enjoy their support and the support of all law enforcement and first responders. This staff development is free and invaluable to us. This year, we have added an SRO, Armed Uniform Full-Time Officer to our team. Police Officer Charles Tausk from Woodbury, who remains on campus. Besides an immediate police response, if necessary, from our police department, our school resource officer remains on the campus. Further, with the support of the Woodbury Police Chief, Kevin Watson, and, thank you, Chief Watson, Lieutenant Phillips and Sergeant Caruso for being here as well, we will be receiving enhanced tactical training, some of which will occur in our very schools after hours to take his threat mitigation efforts and apprehension skills to the next level. The SRO is going to be part of the tac team, he's going to get training.
Frank, who's the perp on the floor?
It's Tim Podvin.
We're guessing and hoping it's Toto.
I think it is. Or my thinking is.
We are exploring the affordable expansion of the SRO program with both Woodbury and Monroe Police Departments. More details at the end. The care group continues to support the school district and community's safe, school safety. Unique drills and emergency preparedness. From September to present, we've had about 22 emergency preparedness drills district-wide, which included but are not limited to the following: lockout drills, lockdown drills, lockdown drills in our cafeteria, shelter evacuation drills, evacuation relocation drills, rapid bus recall drills from the bus garage. We follow FEMA's approved standard response protocol procedures. They're up on the walls, they're up on the screens, and we do staff development on it. Our drills are conducted during inconvenient times with little warning. Our clerical staff are making announcements over PA to get the building in motion and doing a great job. Let's face it, clerical tech play a key role, and the more they practice, the better we are. Every time we initiate a drill, our law enforcement is there to observe and provide critical input. We improve and learn each time as students and staff are more comfortable and have reduced anxiety with our expectations during a real emergency situation. Staff development, emergency preparedness initiatives such as management of aggressive behavior, conflict management and verbal de-escalation, see something, say something, and components on mental health, kudos to the pupil personnel, are being provided to all, all our boots-on-the-ground staff, greeters, monitors, clericals, custodial, food service workers, bus drivers, et cetera, who contribute so much, play critical roles if and when we have a problem. They do a great job to keep our school safe. It's a team effort and we all must work together. We applaud their selflessness and assistance. District-wide video map, we have over 100 cameras district-wide and share access to them with our law enforcement. We replace when we need to and we upgrade. We install in strategic locations based on recommendations from our threat assessment teams and our law enforcement partners. We are increasing recall times and archive times. We plan to add at least 50 cameras, new cameras, district-wide this coming year. Confidential details are on the news and notices. Safety supplies and equipment, when it comes to supplies to improve and enhance school safety... When it comes to supplies to improve and enhance school safety in our buildings, we don't have to spend a ton of money to achieve our goals while we await the funding for all those bells and whistles. Upon identifying vulnerable areas and door access points, we have commenced and plan to continue our portable door alarm signage campaign. These are these portable alarms. They're relatively inexpensive. We're installing them above key locations that ring locally, put out disrupting the entire school building, advising us of unauthorized exit by students and staff. But most importantly, they alert us to deter people from coming in from the outside. This keeps people from popping doors, which prevents a serious security issue. We install signage, warning about unauthorized access, and video surveillance usage in key locations as well to make people think twice. We also operate two campus patrols. Thank you, Dawn. Vehicles are used at various times throughout the district and campuses to patrol our perimeters. We conduct radio checks with the schools, and they report and address suspicious activities. This is in addition to the overwhelming support we get from our police department. We do the same, and we walk through our school buildings. Line item bucket. Bottom line is, this school district is making serious and aggressive decisions towards its commitment to school safety. The two top significant code changes are in our health and safety equipment line and health and safety professional fees line to achieve our goals. In the equipment line, we propose to expand camera and video surveillance-related equipment to at least 50 new units, upgrade our existing access control door buzzer systems at all the schools, and install and initiate a new district ID card directory system at two sites to pilot and consider future expansion within the district. In the professional fee code, we propose to add a second full-time SRO and install five affordable additional part-time officers to cover all our students. Also, dedicated funding for professional development, train for staff, and training for the SROs in our district, which will include real in-the-school tactics in addition to security consulting related services. These proposed budget increases targeted to our safe school initiative are the result of a tremendous amount of thought process and strategic planning by all professional stakeholders in the school safety arena. We are excited and request to take our school safety to the next level. Thank you for the opportunity, and please let me know if you have any questions.
I have one. We've all acknowledged tonight in a number of areas how important the safety is to create an atmosphere where students can learn. And we have a state that has a 2% cap on everything, and we have a 75% increase in this. Is there anything coming from the state that I believe also supports exactly what you're trying to do? Is there any tax override at all? Is there any, some sort of state aid? Is there anything? Or are they just saying, yeah, this is a tough issue, and it's going to get tougher every year, and you're going to have to stick it to your property, to the taxpayers who own the property in your specific district?
Mr. Hubert, I saw a couple of bills proposed that were passed through the Senate, and I remember the new senator, Donald Spitt, a couple of weeks ago, just discussed the status of those bills in the Senate. And he's going to let me know where that's going to be headed. But it did talk about funding some type of aid, you know, that school districts could get. I'm not sure, you know, if we would be eligible for it. If that's anything that I saw as far as, you know, any type of aid that we could get, rehearsals.
Dawn and Stacy and I are going up this, you know, this Sunday than meeting on Monday with our legislators. And if you want us to beat them over the head and shoulders about this, we'd be happy to do it. I mean, this is such an important issue, and then the state ties our hands monetarily.
New York State ASBO had a proposal that dealt with health and safety, like as far as the state aid increase, and, you know, didn't really go anywhere. I mean, they proposed like a much larger increase, like a $2.1 billion increase in state aid, and a component dealt with this specifically. We are eligible for some of the camera and equipment for building aid. There's a specific, you know, entry that you can make for that, but as far as I know, John, no. The answer to your question, there's.
All right, well, let's see if we can make some noise.
And the New York State School Board Association voted on the mental health piece of this because this is kind of the tail of the dog, right? So there's, I think, either four or six proposals from New York State School Board Association into New York State to increase the funding for mental health because they feel there's a direct correlation between what's going on and the lack of mental health because quite a bit of it was pulled in, I think, 2009. I think we lost a whole lot of it.
But if we find SROs, you know, the Woodbury Police.
Combination.
Monroe Police, and we are, you know, cooperating with us, it ain't free. So we need to, you know.
And they also mentioned the SROs.
There's an expenditure to this, and we need to do that if we need to do it. We find that that's important. All right, go ahead, Laura.
So first, I want to say I'm always impressed with your presentation, and I always commend that your budget is always really loved. So I'm not surprised, and I totally approve what you're asking. When I think about it, I think about how many students are in this district, I think about how much staff is in this district, and less than 70 cents a day to keep a child and an adult and a teacher and administrator safe is nothing. So I want to say I commend you and thank you for your knowledge, your expertise, and your passion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the Woodbury and Monroe Police Department.
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, go ahead.
So we're all talking about state aid. So you all have organizations, my organization, my organization of superintendent, the one thing that we're asking the state, if they do give us any money, is don't tell us what to do with it. Oftentimes, the state likes to say, well, this is what you're going to do with the money. I'd like for the state to give us the money for safety and let us decide what we need to do. That's a big, that's very important for us, and, you know, my concern is that they tell us, here is, you know, $200,000, and you need to earmark the money for X. I don't think it's their place to do that, so I just hope that we're all on the same page. Give us the money, we'll decide what we need to do with it.
And I just have one more thing. We should talk about safety with the buses. Are there any star seating for the younger students that will be in those buses?
Any what?
Well, we don't even consider star seating.
The star seats that the younger students need, they are moved from bus to bus. We don't buy them with them built into the seats. We just, we use them as.
Is there a course to add that because if we're going to talk about safety, those type of conferences are very important.
Right, well, we always make sure we have more than we need, and we do, you know, because what happens is from time to time, you'll have a bus say, because if you have one of something, you need two, right? So when you swap out, and so sometimes, you know, it's just as easy to take the equipment. Everybody's been trained how to install a star seat because they look a little intimidating.
Is there some of the scanning equipment that's already built in the bus?
You can buy actual seating with it built in, but then you'd have to make sure that if a student had an IP that needed that seat, and if you, that bus was in for maintenance, you would have to make sure you had another seat, another bus that had that designed seat.
Is there some of those students that you can have the star seat?
Oh, oh, you mean the, like, the five-point seat belts? I'm sorry, I misunderstood because there is a star seat, right. But, yeah, well, when you do that, you have less capacity, you know? You can't, there's no longer fitting three students in the seats, so, which is why that's been a challenge going through the state because, you know, if they enforced that law and made us have those, we're going to decrease the capacity of the buses and therefore need more buses to do the job.
Thank you. I want, on behalf of the board, I want to thank the Woodbury Police. You've been very good to, you've been very good to be here tonight and to sit through all of this.
We don't need dinner.
But you have been even far better to avail yourselves to this district day in and day out, and the board certainly recognizes that, and we really thank you guys. It's very important. You were trying to get them to taze me?
There's going to be a demo, John.
That would be a good demo. Thank you, Elsie.
We were going to have you standing on Barney the Buck.
Oh, thank you. Everyone is piling on this suggestion. Isn't that sweet? Anyway, as a.
Quiet!
As a, as a treat, you can go.
No, they have to listen to one more. Way one more.
I know. They can go. We can't, we can't go. You've been sitting here patiently.
I agree.
I mean, if you want to go into the police station and give your presentation later on.
I'm good. I need five more minutes. So stay with us. So thank you, Board of Education, Superintendent Rodriguez, my colleagues, administrators, department chairs, our great Laura Lerner, our library coordinator, technology committee, an amazing technology team at MCC, and a special thanks to Carol Prudence, and our newest intern Bella, who helped us all throughout this process. So really, the budget is a combination of working with the multiple stakeholders. Technology is a great equalizer, and as Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned in a previous presentation about strategic plan this earlier this year, the preliminary budget recommendations will be inspiring our students and staff to learn and grow together in partnership with the families and communities. That's really the gist of the process of this budget. We have some exciting new initiative this year. One of the new initiatives is the Google certification. This is the pilot that we did this year for teachers. We had a two days of intensive training, and at the end of the second day, teachers would take a Google certified exam, and almost every single teacher passed that. So we want to build upon the success of the first cohort. Next year, we will be actually offering the two cohorts. The first cohort would move from Level 1 to Level 2, and the new cohort will go with the Level 1. This would actually help us when the teachers are really pro in the G-suite applications. They use this technology day to day, day in, day out with our students. Ultimately, our students get benefit. Catch on, this is a data analytical tool that we are planning to integrate this next year. In the last four years, we've been noticing it's about 450 educational, instructional educational resources into the use day in, day out. We always wonder like how this usage of these great products in across the buildings. Are the everybody's using it? Are there some specific folks using it? Are only certain administrators using this? So this will, this product will provide us the great visibility for us and ultimately save us the money by being more efficient because we'll be making a decision based on the collection of this data. So next year or the following year, we'll be making sure that, let's say if we have a product called ClassLink, if it's only K-5 students using it, we don't need to really worry about renewing it for K-12. So that's really the product we will be piloting this year and ultimately purchasing for the next school year. The next part, the next, the next new initiative is the cybersecurity. As you may be aware, that as part of the NISD newer part Law 2D Regulation Part 121, this is, there is a proposed regulation for protecting the personally identifiable information for educational agencies. So we are responsible, we actually collect a variety of different data, whether it's a social security number, student data, birth, IP. We protect, it is our obligation to protect this personally identifiable information as a school district. We will be working with a specific couple of companies who are pro and adapting the NIST standard. Basically, it's the National Institute of Standards and Technology. They have a really robust framework of cybersecurity. We've been already doing some work towards this initiative in the last couple of years, but we'll be working more closely to help to get the help from outside because sometimes we don't know what we don't know. Have the consultant come from outside, have run the penetration testing, really help us to take it to the next level that how safe we are when we are protecting this information for all the stakeholders. The another initiative that we, which we're work in progress, is the Tinker. In the middle school this year, we started using at the sixth grade STEM classes, thanks to Mr. Musano and Ms. Collins, about integration of STEM classes and then using the coding app called Tinker. The beauty of this app is the kids are learning how to code on a daily basis. We want to take it to the next level. This year, earlier this year, we piloted with one of our former graduate company, and he has a fantastic drone integration company. So we actually demoed his product and really started using this product into our technology class. Next year, we can take it to the next level to have the sixth and seventh grade using that, and ultimately, once they finish the coding, they can test the coding by actually flying the drone, and they can program the drone while they're learning how to code. So this will help us our student to be really ready for the world when they graduate from the high school. The library budget supports, the library, see, one of the line items you will see in the library budget that is actually higher this year, it would be the improvement in the library. This year, we support, we actually improved the library furniture at the Sapphire Elementary School. Our goal as a district to renovate one library every year, so we can really see a full-blown changes in one school year instead of just doing a piecemeal improvement. Next year, our goal is to improve, to actually change one of the library into five buildings. What library does for us, library is the all things for all the users. That is the one area in the entire building that every single student would go. So by changing the library and making it more Makerspace-type of the process, it will help our students to learn a little bit differently. Now, today's students learn completely different than when we went to the school. And now Makerspace is not a new concept, but it's getting very popular. It allows our young minds to come into the library and think together as an innovative way. This also will help us integration of technology seamlessly and help us with a sustainable and flexible modular furnishing. The student achievement in terms of library, it's basically rethinking and learning environment. When the real students work on a hands-on and inquiry-based learning in library, using the technology integration and then media reach resources, ultimately improve the communication, collaboration, and information sharing. Technology in the school district, this is, this is the overview of what we have available in our school district. We have a variety of technologies, smart board projectors, Apple products, PC products, Chromebooks, wireless access points, so it's about 7,500 devices. You may remember that three years before I came to you and presented the Smart School Bond, so that process as a phase one is really in work in progress. Our high school and middle school, middle school is about 65% done. We are actually recabling the entire building, ultimately entire school, entire district, starting with the middle school. So middle school is about 65% done, high school is about 35%, and the next building will be Central Valley. That a part of phase one. Once the phase one is over in the next three to four months, there will be a phase two, and that will be the rest of the building. This will allow us to really almost like build the highways and the backbone infrastructure that we can integrate the other instructional resources on a daily basis with no issues down the road. Computer travel tickets, this is the, we use the school dude as a computer ticket system. This allow us to track and support our students and staff in a very timely manner. Typically, you may see in the July and August, as we work more on the projects, the tickets are low. In the September, when everybody comes back, the ticket goes up, and then it kind of plateau is down about 300 average per month. So from September, from July to the end of January, we closed about 2,000 tickets. Preliminary recommendation in terms of technology for codes, it's data processing, computer literacy, library media, and central printing. What we did this year, and we've been doing it for the last couple of years, we always look at the past year's budget and then try to make sense that is this, this product makes sense to build into the data processing or the computer literacy? Because there is aid involved with this, and we keep always evolving the budget to make sure that we budget where it's supposed to be budgeted instead of, and instead of keeping the budget transfer. So this will help us and business office to minimize the budget transfer. So we are looking actually from the last year, from this year to next year, the data processing is about 1.81% increase, computer literacy, it's about 10%. Library media, that is a big change. From this year on, we'll be budgeting for one building library at a time, so we can renovate the library in one shot instead of just doing in the piecemeal. And the central printing, that's a success story. I'll talk to you briefly when I show you the pie chart. It's actually down 26%. So data processing, this basically covers us, we try to buy the devices or the instructional solution from BOSIS. This will help us to allow the BOSIS aid that will come back to our general fund for the next year's budget. The central data processing basically involves our student management system, the financial management system, the various BOSIS closer, and cybersecurity improvement. Computer-assisted instruction, this cover of instructional side, this basically covers the interactive solution, Chromebook cards. We're planning to add actually about 30 more Chromebook cards, which is about 1,000 Chromebooks across the district. The other part that we are. The other part that we are also working is, for the next school year, is to test the interactive flat panel. If you notice, we have about 400 SMARTboards in the district. Now is the time as a district, I think we can move forward and test the interactive flat panel display. So, our technology committee next week, actually, we have nine vendors come down and demonstrate their products, and then we will pick one product from that to pilot this year, and then we'll purchase next year. So, the goal is in next seven to eight years, eventually remove the SMARTboard and a projector, and then ultimately go with the flat screen TVs. Library media, it's a one-line item change, that otherwise the budget is actually very minimum increase. It would be the, one of the media furniture line item that we will be upgrading to for one of the two, five buildings. Central printing, so about three years before, we implemented a policy to have the ID badge for your printing, so anytime you print, when you go to the copier, you had to use your ID badge to collect your print job. That improved our efficiency tremendously, and also now, because we have more electronic resources in terms of Chromebooks, we see the printing goes down, is going down. So, when we calculated the last three years, we came to the last three years of the financial side, we came to the conclusion that this budget line can be reduced by almost one-fourth, by 26%. Our goal is to reinvest this money to buy more instructional resources like Chromebooks.
Any questions?
And I have a short video, and then...
A video?
So, special thanks to our communication department.
I was.
That's exciting.
Well, look, it's me when I was a little girl.
It's Dylan.
It's the past, yeah.
I love to do how to use my French, Haley.
I like your type.
Me too.
I love it.
And it's beautiful.
I love it, so cute.
Yeah, it's like, it's like that.
Oh, not her.
No.
Yeah, we'll share it.
Turn it down a little.
Yeah, it's...
Oh.
I'm sorry.
We need to upgrade the dial-up service.
Stop stealing Wi-Fi from the Chinese restaurant. Is that in the...
Do we need more investment here?
We're not gonna watch it again. Patrick.
We're like a minute and a half in.
Yeah, we're not gonna start over again.
Just go to the end.
Thank you.
Does it end? All right, thank you. Questions on this?
The new...
All right, thank you, everybody. I mean, number one, getting a budget together is a Herculean task, and then on top of that, getting a presentation to the Board of Ed and Administration is another task, so we thank you for both. And sometimes I find in my business, when I have to make a presentation, I actually start to understand what I did before even a little bit better, so hopefully there's a little bit of learning for you too in helping us learn, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports by Board of Education, policy, Chris?
We have a meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, that's all I have.
Okay, facilities done?
We haven't met since the last time, so there's nothing new, other than the progress continuing on the...
Right.
I don't know, Patrick, is any, anything to add?
No, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with, we have to talk about direct procurement related to the capital project, we postponed that. The idea would be applying certain things that the children are...
Can't hear you, but that's okay. You can hear me, John. Oh, I'm sorry, I did. Okay.
So, I was saying that we were gonna have a meeting about direct procurement of certain items related to the capital project, so it's a way of accelerating the process and avoiding bidding, so that's it.
All right, thanks. I'm sorry, I missed appointment of our purchase committee, we have a motion to appoint a committee to select the annual art purchase award. Mr. Beeler, Chris second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, Christian Hess, Student Representative of the Board of Education, report.
So, I promised to make this brief.
Under an hour.
Under an hour, yes, for sure. So, recently, I have been in touch, I've been helping out with, concerning about the North Main grant that's going on with the new playground, so I've been helping out with that a little bit during my lunch period. I've been gathering a bunch of students to come by, and actually, there's computers set up over on the shower room, and been filling out every day, filling out and getting as many votes as we can for the, I believe it's a $25,000 grant that we could win, and that would be great for students, you know, new playground, who doesn't want a new playground?
No.
What else? I'm actually a part of this club, I'm a Safe School Ambassador, that's the club I'm involved with, and I recently have developed like a kind of a game that, the whole point of the game is to really interact with new people in the building, so it's actually a scavenger hunt. Now, everybody in Safe School Ambassadors is assigned to find a person, and I give out clues. Now, what they have to do for this person is find them, introduce themselves, and basically ask their clues, find out if the person is their person with the clues, and then come back to myself and a few other guys, and if they're right, they receive a reward. The whole point of this game is to really establish like connections and develop relationships as you were talking about earlier, and, you know, better environment for the students to be learning, so, yeah, that's basically it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, North Main. Go on, go online. Some of you have more than one email address, I'm not suggesting on it.
Actually, is it a link on the website?
Yes.
Don't say that.
Oh, I actually have to add two more things to that. You can not only do it like one day, you can vote more than once. So, let's say you vote today, like that's your maximum for that day, and then tomorrow you can vote again, the next day you can vote every day.
Every 24 hours?
I believe, yeah, it's on the website.
And more than one email, which we know everybody here has more than one.
Right, because we have a work email and a personal email.
Yes, exactly.
And some of us have our aliases.
You just have to prove you're not a robot.
Yes.
And click the ones with the storefronts, whatever that is. All right, thank you.
Well, Lorene had something.
People going up to each other and saying, "How are you doing?"
It actually just, it recently just started, so it's actually gonna last like a month. Waiting to hear, we're gonna like evaluate everybody's results at like February 27th, I believe, and see how everything goes, and, you know, I'm excited to see, eager to find out the results. What was that? Oh, yeah, I'll share it, too.
Good. Personnel.
I respectfully request approval.
Chris has a motion.
Second.
Stacy is seconding. Any questions or comments on personnel, Matt? There being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried, business and financial.
I respectfully request the approval of the items under business financials.
Motion.
Second.
Got that, Beeler. Chris. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried, motion to approve the arrangements of the recommended placements by the Committee of Special Education and Preschool Special Education, 15, 1, 2, 3, 4 on your agenda? Motion. Second. Who, what? Oh, we've got a second. Who motion?
Stacy.
Stacy.
Stay with us.
Whatever. Yeah, no, no, it's not time for my gerotoll yet. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried, reports I by Boards and Central Administration. Chris?
I want to thank all the presenters, they did a great job. I want to thank the PPS, the teachers there, they did a great job identifying crisis and dealing with it. Lauren, after school day is up, so I want to commend them on all their work. I want to thank the Transportation Department for the last couple of weeks, we've had cold weather, they've been out there at 3, 4:00 in the morning, minus 14, 15 degrees, evaluating whether the buses are ready to go, and our students are safe getting to school, plus the evaluation with Elsie in the morning, whether we're going to open late or delay. It's worked so far, I think. Kids all got home safe before the snow came and whatnot, so good job there. I want to thank the police officers at the middle school for their response and their presence for the couple of days, and I think they have probably had a great deal to do with solving it so quickly, and I also wanted to say just keep voting on Foot North Main online every day you can.
Done, thank you.
All right.
No, we have to skip Dawn from now on, we have to go back to her at the end.
Dawn did everything.
Well, it's only been two weeks.
So, and we did 50 things.
She did 30.
And five of those days, I was chaperoning a trip that the high school students were on. John Cassie and I coordinated a trip to Washington DC in Baltimore, where we took 46 students to a leadership conference, and they will be presenting next board meeting, so I'll save all the information on that.
Lots of good Facebook, Boz.
Yeah, it was a good journey. Today, I went to Orange Elstebosis, and we observed the CTEC program, and I thought that that was just an unbelievable opportunity for so many of our students. We visited the many different areas, culinary and forensics and automotive and the health careers, so I was very impressed with the program. And yesterday, the superintendent and Stacy and I visited North Main, Central Valley, and the middle school, where we were able to go into some of the classrooms and see a lot of the different programs. At the middle school, we got to see the writers workshop and the STEAM, is it STEAM or is it STEM?
STEAM.
STEAM. The new program there for the sixth graders, and again, visited some of the classrooms, and at North Main, Joe, we had the Village of Monroe was there to talk about a contest that they're running, and that was, the kids were all excited about that. And, yeah, I think that's all I got to do in my two weeks.
The new era of Castle.
And I do want to just give a shout out to the school counselors, visited the school counselor appreciation week, and just to thank them for everything that they do for us students.
Are you really done?
I think so.
Done.
Cool. I want to thank all the presenters, I know it's very difficult to put together the budget, and there's a lot of very difficult decisions that go into the financial side of it, so I want to thank all of them and the Woodbury Police Department for the great job they did last week, and that's it.
Suzanne?
I would like to thank the pupil personnel service, school day presentation, and everyone involved, I know they're all gone, but the work that they're doing is extremely necessary and very much appreciated. I'd also like to thank Patrick and Dawn and Peter and Frank from Bartow for the budget presentation, as well as the Woodbury Police Department for everything they're doing for the district, and...
Christian?
Just want to thank everybody for coming out, presenting dedication and commitment to Austin, a school district, and I hope everybody has a great night.
Thank you, Dawn.
Just wanted to let everyone know that if anybody is interested in running for the open positions, that will be for the next school year, 2019, 2020, packets will be soon available, probably by March 1st. They can be picked up in our office, they have to be picked up in person, and there will also be information on our website regarding that information. There will be three seats, and they're three-year terms.
Thank you. Eric?
Just one, one final plug for PPS. From the perspective of a former building principal, you know, we have a phenomenal staff, but inevitably, when a difficult situation arises, you have kind of a core circle of people who you really, really go to immediately to guide you through that situation, and our PPS staff in this school district is without question a critical component to that core group. And certainly, that includes difficult situations with our students, but somebody asked about supporting staff, we've had tragic situations that have directly impacted our staff, and that PPS group supports the students and the staff directly to support them through so many, so many difficult situations, so hats off to them, because the service that they provide the school district is invaluable. They are phenomenal, so thanks.
Patrick?
I just want to thank the PPS staff and Christine for the PPS presentation, very enlightening, very moving, excellent, and I also like to thank the directors, my colleagues, who presented the budget, and I thank you for all your efforts and your work on the budget, that's it.
Matt?
I just want to echo everyone else, and similar to what Eric said, you know, some of the, one of the, some of the worst days as a building administrator are when you start to go through the process of weeding through the tragedies, but at the same time, there are also some of the absolute greatest days, because you see greatness in action, and that is a tribute to those people in that department, so a huge thank you to them. Thanks to all of the presenters on the budget, have a wonderful night.
All right.
Well, I said enough, all right, so I was just gonna say thank you all to the presenters.
No.
And I am looking forward to the Central Valley upcoming play on Saturday, I'm gonna go Saturday, Junie B.
Stacy?
I want to thank all the presenters, I know that it seems like a short presentation to us, but we know that there's a lot of work that gets involved. I really do appreciate that Christine brought her entire staff, because it's not just one person that kind of runs the show, and I think I personally wish that we had doubled what you have over there, because I think it's needed. I want to thank the principals that we got to visit with yesterday at North Main, the assistant principals, Central Valley... And our PPS staff in this school district is without question, a critical component to that core group. And, and certainly that, that includes difficult situations with our students, but somebody asked about supporting staff. We've had tragic situations that have directly impacted our staff. And that PPS group supports the students and the staff directly to support them through so many, so many difficult situations. So hats off to them because the service that they provide the school district is invaluable. They are phenomenal. So, thanks.
I just want to thank the PPS staff and Christine for the PPS presentation. Very enlightening, very moving, excellent. And I also like to thank the directors, my colleagues who presented the budget tonight. Thank you for all your efforts and your work.
Matt?
I just want to echo everyone else and similar to what Eric said, you know, some of the, one of the, some of the worst days as a building administrator are when you start to go through the process of weeding through the tragedies. But at the same time, there are also some of the absolute greatest days because you see greatness in action. And that is a tribute to those people in that department. So a huge thank you to them. Thanks to all of putting up such a budget. Have a wonderful night.
All right.
Well, I said enough. All right, so I was just going to say thank you all for the.
No.
And I am looking forward to the Central Valley upcoming play on Saturday. I'm going to go Saturday. Janie B.
Stacy?
I want to thank all the presenters. I know that it seems like a short presentation to us, but we know that there's a lot of work that gets involved. I really do appreciate that Christine brought her entire staff because it's not just one person that kind of runs the show. And I think, I personally wish that we had doubled what you have over there because I think it's needed. I want to thank the principals that we got to visit with yesterday at North Main, the assistant principals, Central Valley, and the middle school. We got to see some great programs. And I just want to echo from what Barbo was saying before as far as the media and just the sense of community because yesterday, we were able to go into Mr. Elser's class at North Main, which is the library specialist there. And they're doing some pretty amazing stuff with what they already have for equipment. So I can't wait to see what they do with new equipment. And I just think the sense of community that's happening with the North Main playground, the friendly competition that's going to happen between Pine Tree and North Main with the mayor of Monroe and that whole community endeavor, I just think it's a great thing. And I think it's great that we all support each other.
Thank you. Anthony?
Thank you to all the presenters tonight. It really does enlighten all of us on the board. Thank you to the police department for being here. I did get to go to the Smith-Clove family fun night at the high school and that was a lot of fun for everyone. And I just want everyone to have a good evening.
Thank you.
Congratulate the middle school and high school students on another successful lead trip. Thanks, Dawn, for her efforts involved in everything. Buildings, grounds, bus garage for taking care of the snow and the ice. Looks like they'll get to do it again this coming Tuesday. Remind anyone who might be watching, please shovel your sidewalks. A lot of times, our students are out, early morning hours, it's dark. You either don't want them walking through an icy sidewalk or even worse, walking in a street when cars are flying by. And lastly, I want to congratulate Elsie for not only having a delayed opening, but an early dismissal in the same day.
That was great.
Very monumental.
By the way, North Main, I mean, Village of Monroe, excuse me, Village of Monroe sent out a, a notice with their water bills regarding sidewalk clearing and all of that. I hope every municipality reminds their residents of their obligations by the law to clear sidewalks in public areas so that our children can be safe. Elsie?
I want to thank all the presenters. You did an excellent job. It is school counseling week, so thank you to all of our counselors for doing the work that you do. If you have not noticed, there's a large LED sign right in front of Central Valley. It gives you the time, so you make sure wherever you're going, you're on time. We're excited about having this sign. I feel bad that Dolores is not here to be able to enjoy the sign, but it is there. I did text her and tell her that. So I want to say thank you to everyone who worked to put up that sign. The last thing is I want to share with everyone that the district is now ex-official members of an organization called this Tri-State Consortium. The Tri-State Consortium is a consortium of superintendents and it is New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut. And what it is composed of is high-achieving school districts. Eric and I visited Wappingshire School District and they are a part of that. And what we're looking to do is to find best practices. And so we're now ex-official members, which means that we will be allowed to walk and meet with them and look at how they address certain problems. And they in turn will allow us to train some of our own teachers to be able to look at situations, look at issues, and how they resolve it, looking at best practices. So we're excited about being members. Our hope is to become an official member. We met with them and they, they allowed us to become ex-official members for this year. And our goal is to become members, which will enable all of the, our administrators in the district and teachers to be part of this consortium. So I'm very excited about that. And then one more thing, I want to congratulate Samantha Ryan for playing. She's going to be playing for the Canadian Junior Women's National Softball, Softball Team. It was in the paper. So congratulations, Samantha Ryan. Good job.
Thank you for, everybody for anything you did and everything you did. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss the appointment of district clerk? Matters leading to the discipline of a particular person, consideration of a retirement request and the board cram?
We already did it.
Motion.
It's already been moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. You can't do that until I finish. I have that adjourned.